... so once again, I'm telling you, one of the easiest ways to have control of this peripheral neuropathy is watch your blood sugar. If you're diabetic, that's a sure sign that you're probably going to come down with some kind of peripheral neuropathy in the future. So these are the things you want to watch is the blood sugar, you want to watch your anti-inflammatory foods. Now, go get this checked out by a professional. Maybe it is in your feet, but the most likely problem is it is not. It's more likely a brain problem, or more likely a blood sugar or metabolic problem. If you can't get these conditions checked out and get them taken care of by these professionals, some of these other therapies can help, like brain-based therapy or metabolic nutrition. I'm going to urge you to take care of these blood sugar problems. All senior citizens seem to experience them, but you can take care of it a lot better if you catch it before it becomes a diabetes kind of problem.
We are continuing our conversations today with the Wise &amp; Healthy Aging Center here in Santa Monica, and I'd like to introduce you to Eric Engel, an attorney at law, who is also a vice chair of the Mar Vista Wise Connections, correct?
Correct.
Great, Eric, welcome, welcome. Thank you for making time for us today. How do you see your function in this? This is kind of a startup program and new, so you're inventing this as you go.
Yes, we are. We're using a village model that was started with Beacon Hill area in Boston, but we are certainly innovating as we go to develop our systems. And it takes a lot of resources, essentially the community. It's a very grassroots-oriented proposition, and we've also been fortunate enough to have the resources of Wise &amp; Healthy Aging in Santa Monica to help us with a lot of the administrative aspects.
Yeah, but go to the experts in the field. I sure had to discover that. Even though there's this big bubble of baby boomers coming into the aging population, the truth is, these issues with seniors and the services they need have been with us for a long, long time. Some of the things that you're able to help with and coordinate with when someone is approached about an investment opportunity to kind of give wise counsel, if you will?
Yes, we're actually set up around a one-call-does-it-all kind of concept, that we have a single phone number that a member can call for whatever resources they need, whether it's sitting in to listen to a financial investment pitch if they've been approached, for example, or to connect them with an advisory service where they can get, you know, independent consultations about whether this is a good idea or not. For example, Wise &amp; Healthy Aging has a reverse mortgage program, for example. That's a common situation. We could connect people with that, of course. And often, people just seem to want, you know, a neutral ear, somebody to sit in and listen and be able to talk to them separately about whether this is a program they might want to get involved in or not. We don't give investment advice per se, that's not the concept, but we would connect them with people who can help them through the situation.
Well, on the issue of finding qualified or being able to recommend qualified vendors, that is a critical issue because seniors often, through their own naivete, can lose their homes with these mechanic claims. And I understand you're in the process of actually qualifying vendors now, whether it's a plumber or contractor?
That's correct. We've gotten our first applications in and our startup program from the vendors, and a lot of them are contractors, electricians and plumbers and so forth, handymen even. And that process is very important. There are a lot of records that are available. We have the resources to investigate, you know, the contractors that, you know, seniors may not always think to go and investigate. And it is very important because seniors can get themselves in a lot of trouble very quickly with a bad contractor.
Well, I know one of the things I like to explain to family members, caregivers, is that you can save yourself a lot of grief if you have a single resource, a place to call, just to make sure you're making the right decisions on behalf of your parents. I love the fact that with Wise &amp; Healthy Aging, it's a membership program, and you can actually purchase a membership for mom and dad, just to protect them.
That's correct. And the idea is, you know, we're there to support the caregivers as well as the seniors who are getting the direct service, but the caregivers may well want to call us as well for, you know, telling us there's an issue that we may want to address. And, you know, we can contact our members and talk to them about that.
Right. Especially when you get to end-of-life issues. I know for me, having a fair witness come and sort of manage a family discussion so that we have no hard feelings, and these are the facts, and these are the issues you're going to be facing. Now, how will we address that? That's very important.
Right. And that's part of the one-call-does-it-all kind of service, that we can send volunteers, qualified social workers, whatever is needed for the situation, to just attend and help facilitate whatever is going on. We held small sessions with, you know, people in the early stages of developing the program, you know, small group discussions, and we're continuing to hold living room sessions on those now. And one of the things that struck me in the course of the discussions was that people often just want somebody there for a small event, even as small as, you know, I want to climb a ladder to change a light bulb. I'd really prefer to have somebody there to make sure nothing goes wrong.
That's right. Well, it's hard to give up those household chores that we took for granted when we were young, I mean, cleaning the rain gutters, for example. How many times do you have to see in a newspaper the elderly man up on his roof who, you know, sadly has a fatal fall? And just some, even if it's someone to say, "No, that's not a good idea," or to hold the ladder.
Right.
Now, feedback. We were talking earlier before we sat down today about the feedbacks, that members and participants are going to be asked to actively give their impressions of vendors and the services offered?
Yes, that's a very important part of it, is we intend to call the members after the service is provided, make sure it was completed to their satisfaction, and ask them for general feedback of how well the vendor provided the services, is there anything that needs to be followed up? And to act as an intermediary, if there is any issue with the vendor, to find out what exactly it is. Maybe it's just a follow-up call, or maybe there's a real problem, and we need to address that with the vendor.
Eric, thank you so much for coming and joining us today and explaining a little bit more about the program, Wise &amp; Healthy Aging. We'll be back.
Cooking? Washing greasy food byproducts down the sink? Yes? Do you like clogged and blocked sewer lines that might cause a spill in your street or home? No? Well, neither do we. So please use paper towels to wipe oils and grease from your cooking utensils, and throw away all the greasy items into the trash can. Doing so will help prevent grease blockages and keep the sewage where it belongs, in the pipes, and help us protect the environment and you. An emergency can happen... at any time. That's why you need to be prepared. Put together an emergency kit with food, water, a first aid kit, a flashlight, radio, and some tools. You're never too old to prepare. Get the message?
And now it's time for another new segment of our Aging in L.A. show, Caregiver's Corner.
As a family caregiver, one of the biggest challenges is learning to manage our stress. Stress is what happens when we are overwhelmed, having more to do than what we can handle. And so we need to find a way to manage stress. But oftentimes, that's easier said than done, isn't it? So let me tell you a little bit about how you can work on it. First, you need to recognize it. Try and figure out what is it that sets you off? What is it that starts to raise your stress level? What are some of the signs that the stress is coming in? Is it because you feel more irritable, because you cry a little easier, you snap at people, or you withdraw? You need to recognize the symptoms, so then you can start taking some steps towards correcting it. Identify the sources of your stress. Is it that you feel you have too much to do? Perhaps you need to delegate some of those tasks? Perhaps you're not getting enough sleep? Perhaps you just feel you're not being understood? Or sometimes, it's when you have to answer that same repeated question several times again. So how can you handle it? How can you reduce your stress levels? Think about things that you can do easily, like stepping out of the room, taking some deep breaths, just to catch yourself, collect yourself again. Get some oxygen back into your blood, which goes into your brain and helps you calm down. Perhaps even take a short little walk outside. Find ways that you can try to reduce your stress. Determine what you can and cannot change. Those things that you cannot change, you need to then find a different way to cope with them. But the things that you can change, even the smallest change can make a big difference. You need to take action. If you identify that you need help and you won't take any action, that can be very detrimental to your health, your mental health, emotional, and physical. So make sure that you start to size up what and how you can make some changes that will improve the situation in caregiving. On the other hand, failure to take action can have all kinds of side effects, too. It can bring on depression. It can affect your relationships, not only with the care receiver, but with the entire family. It can be very detrimental to your health. As we say, your mental, emotional, and physical well-being are very important. You may want to change the situation. For example, if the care receiver is taking the medications on their own, more often than they should, the situation needs to be changed by you having movement of the medications somewhere where they are not visible. That way, they're out of sight, and the care receiver no longer is thinking about taking meds constantly. Another thing you may want to look at is changing the perception of how you view things. If it makes you angry that someone is asking you the same question over and over again, change your perception and understand it's the illness, it's not the person that's trying to be difficult. Change your response. Say, "Here's a few crackers to hold you until dinnertime. We'll be eating at 6 o'clock." Because to say to the person, "Don't you remember, we always eat at 6 o'clock?" That's really not helping the situation. But the way you respond to it settles things down for everybody, and it makes for better quality of life for the whole family.
And now we're going to visit with Barbara Browning, a longtime Santa Monica resident, recently retired, who now volunteers for the Wise &amp; Healthy Aging program. Welcome.
Thank you.
Volunteering can be very satisfying, or sometimes so frustrating, but as a case manager with the local hospital here, you have seen how many needs there are with seniors.
Yes, and there definitely, there isn't a senior that doesn't have a need that I don't feel that we can address.
And that's very important, from basic transportation, how do you get the bus pass or to get to the doctor's appointment, to more serious issues like making sure the medications are appropriate.
Yes, and sometimes people just want to be checked on, the security of sons and daughters, nieces and nephews that are busy.
And struck by how often seniors are living alone, and they need someone to help them.
There is, and that's a choice that they've made, that they want to remain in their home, and they want to remain as independent as possible.
Well, and of course, being able to age in place in your home is a great comfort to our seniors.
Yes, it is.
Now, delivering services to the home, things like checking on, I don't know, making sure the rugs are tied down, and if there are grab bars in the bathroom facilities, these are all the things that you can help with, right?
Yes, definitely. And as we go into the home, we can identify things that maybe other people might not identify.
Oh, yes, indeed, and that's important. As a person starting up a program, are you relying on the contacts you've made over all the years to go and talk to people, say, "Come and join us for a conversation"?
Oh, definitely. And that's a good place to start, because people know you, and hopefully, you have a reputation that they can trust. So that's really where you have to start. And then with the contacts that they have, it will grow.
Well, and it needs to, because with Wise &amp; Healthy Aging, it is a community-based program, and Santa Monica is wonderful about that, because there is an existing sense of community.
Yes, it is, and people in certain neighborhoods know each other. But this also provides an opportunity that they have some privacy, too, that they can manage, make a phone call, and get the needs met without contacting their neighbors or their families, something.
Well, I keep telling people, don't be embarrassed about asking for help. For example, having meals delivered is not a sin, it is not something to be embarrassed about. It's a service that is offered to our communities.
Yes, it definitely is, but to the older person, sometimes it's a sign to them that they can't do something. So if they can be the ones that can initiate the phone call and do it through an outside agency, it's easier for them, often.
And it's important, too, for caregivers to have a resource, so they can bounce ideas off them or express their concerns.
Yes, and older people often are more receptive to outside suggestions to those within their family.
Yeah, just none of that family baggage.
Right, exactly.
Well, of course. And what I've found, too, is that some of our older volunteers, who may be candidates for these kind of services, are actually quite energetic and are committed to their community.
Oh, they are, and the beauty of this is that you can be a member, and you can be a volunteer also.
All at the same time.
So you can reach out and yet receive the services yourself.
We're going to take a look now at the Santa Monica Governing Council as they have a discussion.
Number seven on our agenda, talking about some event or a potential open house in January of next year.
Okay. What comes to mind for me right away is to have maybe posters of different villages or different aspects of the program that people could actually go around and look at, and perhaps one of us could be at each station to talk about, you know, I don't know, we can think about the content of the posters. If we plan a short piece of time for some kind of presentation, we could have a little panel of maybe three members.
You might want to have some little keynote or celeb, you know, I don't want to say a celebrity, but it could be an official, you know, someone elected official or celebrity or somebody. Might be nice to help, you know, get some, you know, for promotions and getting some attention. I don't know who that would be.
Well, we could think about that.
Yeah. Someone who would be... We just don't want to have too much of a program.
Yeah, no.
Too much. Or we could have things at different times.
I think that's a great suggestion.
And now it's time to hear from Brenda Barnett from the Department of Animal Services.
I'm here with my little friend Fiona, who is a shelter animal that I have at home with me on foster care. And foster care for adult animals is one of our newer programs. So Fiona is seven to 10 years old. She's a perfect companion for the Seniors for Senior program. And what's really neat about the foster program is not only is Fiona getting the home care that she deserves, but she also is gaining a little bit of weight, and I've learned some very neat things about her. She's house-trained, she likes to walk on a leash, she loves to sit on your lap. So, you know, when we have these little dogs out in foster care, we learn a lot about them that we can share with the adopters. The same thing is true for the kitties. Sometimes you'll have a kitty in the shelter who just seems like she's a little depressed, she's not paying much attention. You take one of those kitties at home, let it sit on a lap for a few days, let it get hand treats, and it's great, because when they come back, then they're looking for the person to pet them. So another way that you can help with it at the shelter is to take home some of these companion animals and let them stay with you for a few days, a few weeks, or a few months, and it expands the walls of our shelter without us having to build more shelter space. So we hardly recommend, and we're looking for help with this foster care program. You can get foster animals shelters. It's a program that we're rolling out. We're starting at a couple of the shelters, and then it will start in all the shelters. So this is a great supplemental way. It's also a way to take an animal home, foster it for a little while, and if you happen to fall in love with your foster, then you can go ahead and adopt it. Now, that's not going to happen for me and Fiona, because I have other dogs at home, and Fiona probably wants to be the only dog in your life. So, you know, Fiona needs to go to a home where there's maybe one other dog or no dogs at all, and she'll be your best friend for life.
That's all the time we have for today's show, and I sure hope you enjoyed the new format. I'm Paul Peterson, and I hope to see you again for Aging in L.A.
My mom kept telling my dad to clear the brush around our house, because it was a fire hazard, and clearing it could save our house someday. My dad kept saying he would do it someday, someday, someday. Then someday came, and it was too late, too late, too late. Don't wait until it's too late. Clear the brush now.
Hi, I'm Kristy Oldham in Los Feliz. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Would you like a mustache for that?
Hi, I'm Kristy Oldham in Los Feliz. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Would you like a mustache for that?
Hi, I'm Kristy Oldham in Los Feliz. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Would you like a mustache for that?
Hi, I'm Kristy Oldham in Los Feliz. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Would you like a mustache for that?
Good morning, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council for our meeting this day on the first day of February 2011.
Mr. Stein, you take the turn?
I'll get it.
Okay, okay, just so you know your line.
We await a few members of council. We wish everybody a good morning. Special to have the mayor of Highland here from the Southern California Associations Mayor McCallell, let's give a big hand for Mayor McCallell from Highland, out in San We welcome you here, along with the Southern California Associations of Governments. We're joined by Mr. Parks. Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. All right, we have a request for Mr. Kocorian, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Wesson. Please come join us in the chambers. Thank you very much. We want to welcome Councilmember Reyes, who did such a great job on the gateway at Figueroa Mr. Reyes, I went through your district this morning, beautiful job. Mr. Reyes, welcome this morning. Mr. Garcetti is here. Please give a warm welcome to President of City Council, Mr. Eric Garcetti.
We have Ms. Hahn, Mr. Parks, excused to arrive, sorry, excused for the day, Mr. Kretz, excuse to arrive late, as well as Ms. Perry and myself, though I'm here right now. So we are at 10:00 now with Mr. Wesson. If you'll please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Alec on Cardinals, Hahn, Weezer, Kretz, Kocorian, LaBanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rose, Nelson, Smith, Wesson, Stein, Garcetti, 11 members present, and a quorum as president.
All right, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Weezer moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds, without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolution.
Mayor McCowen, let's give a big hand for Mayor McCowen from Highland out in San Bernardino County. We welcome you here along with the Southern California Associations of Governments. We're joined by Mr. Parks, thank you very much, Mr. Parks. All right, we have a request for Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Wesson. Please come join us in the chambers, thank you very much. We want to welcome Councilmember Reyes, who did such a great job on the gateway at Figueroa and Riverside Drive. Mr. Reyes, I went through your district this morning, beautiful job. Mr. Reyes, welcome this morning. Mr. Garcetti is here. Please give a warm welcome to President of City Council, Mr. Eric Garcetti.
Thank you, we have Ms. Hahn, Mr. Parks, excused to arrive, sorry, excused for the day, Mr. Keretz, excuse to arrive late as well as Ms. Perry and myself, though I'm here right now. So we are at 10 now with Mr. Wesson, if you'll please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Alec, on Cardinals, Hahn, Weezer, Keretz, Krikorian, LaBange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rose, Nelson, Smith, Wesson, Stein, Garcetti, 11 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Weezer moves and Mr. Reyes seconds without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. LaBange moves and Mr. Stein seconds without objection, those will be approved as well. It is Tuesday and I know Mr. LaBange has a special guest. If I can ask everybody to please rise for our pledge of allegiance and we have a special guest who will lead us in the salute to the flag. Mr. LaBange.
Mr. President, we have the mayor of Highland, Mayor McGlaughlin, who is here to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you very much. Please join me as we salute the flag of our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it's great to have you here in chambers. Hope you enjoy your stay. Mr. Smith?
The mayor, uh, whoa.
Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, buddy. If I also point out that the mayor who's joining us today is also the president of the Southern California Association of Governments, which represents all the counties of Southern California, all the cities in Southern California except for San Diego, so, Mr. Mayor.
Wonderful. Great to have you here. Thank you so much. If we can, go to the next order of business, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to run through the agenda?
Yes, please. Colleagues, if we can please turn our attention to today's agenda at hand, and we do have a number of ordinances we're still, I think we have everybody accounted for, except Mr. Krikorian is still late, so as soon as we have him, we'll have 12 members, if we can hold the ordinances on the desk.
Yes, Mr. President, item one is an item notice for public hearing.
Okay, we don't have any cards on that, so we'll open and close that public hearing, but we'll hold one on the desk until we have 12 members. Next items, please.
Items two through seven are items to which public hearings have been held. Item six is confirmation of a city official, do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold six on the desk and we'll call seven special as well. Next items, please.
Items.
I got it.
Items eight through 21 are items to which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, if there's no objection, we'll consider those items next. Any cards on those, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, there's cards on items 14, 16, and 17.
Okay, we'll call those special for cards from the public, we'll close.
And especially 18 as well.
I'm sorry, number 18 as well, call those for special and close the other public hearings. Any specials on these, Mr. Clerk?
16, but it's for cards, correct?
Sure, we'll call it special for you as well. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, let's take up the balance. Do not have cards or have not been called special by members and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, those are approved. Next items, please.
On the supplemental agenda, items 22 and 23 are items to which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration, and I do understand a substitute motion is on the works on 23. Do you wish to hold that?
All right, let's hold 23 for the substitute and, Mr. Reyes?
Special 23 for the substitute.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody wishing to call 22 special? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on 22 and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
We'll send that forthwith without objection. Mr. Reyes?
Counselor, I just want to take a moment. We also wanted to recognize with us, we have the executive director of SCAG, Hassan Ikada, who's with us, thank you for having you here. We have Doug Wilford, he's the deputy executive director, planning and programs, and Hua Shilu, director of land use, environmental planning. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you. We have Mr. Krikorian here, so we can take up the ordinances we're holding on the desk. If we'll please, on numbers one through five, take those together, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, those are approved and we'll send one forthwith without objection as well. We'll move to our general public comment this time and we have Donna Perman out in the San Fernando Valley is our first speaker. Good morning, Ms. Perman. You have a, there you are, good morning.
Okay, didn't think of we'd get past. Okay, anyway, what we need to do is the governor needs to be recalled because he's temporarily passing taxes and he lied. He's not going after the real problem, the CRA. He says, what are we going to do about the CRA? The mayor should be impeached because he wants to raise taxes, says, anyway, let's see, Antonio, oh, Antonio will wait till the March 8th and to get more tax revenue. We'll have a new library tax and with Prop L, that money will be sorted, for Prop L will be for redevelopment and car registration that we're paying now will go to the state so the state won't be short. They want a Jimmy Prop 25, they want to screw the public. Everything is going up, food, gas, medicine, essentials, they want more taxes. You can't take blood out of a turnip. You want to raise revenue because the people put in Prop 25, made it possible with a majority vote. They want to increase taxes on the March 8th ballot, also on the June ballot. That's why we need to get rid of Mayor Antonio and Ricoso. Redemption is coming, the Middle East is in chaos and the Middle East is falling, Yemen, whether it's, wherever they have a dictatorship, they want to uproot our government. They'll have a, want to have a revolution, they want to take away our guns and if we can't resist the politicians and who are harboring terrorists. And you're fighting Arizona over its border problems and the whole thing is that we can't do anything because we don't have any money when the CRA is able to take all our money because only so much money is taken from the property tax and if most of that is allocated toward the CRA and the CRA is giving money to the mayor and all the politicians and our city council, really we don't have any power whatsoever. And, did I run out of time? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perman, and just as a point of information, Measure L is not a new tax, regardless of whether you vote for it or not, all it does is allocate a slightly larger percentage of the city's budget to the library without raising taxes. Matt Dowd is our next speaker in general public comment.
All right, thank you, reset the clock, only just started. Once again, I just want to point out that the city attorneys putting the city in a bunch of trouble because they refuse to acknowledge the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal is ready to rule on the Michael Hunt case and if you lose that one, then you open yourself up to litigation from everybody for the last five years who you gave a permit to at Venice Beach. Now, these are the things that they're missing here that, you know, you're playing with the, you know, 500 plaintiffs for the next one and that'll be Ninth Circuit language, so it's impossible to get out of it. Here's what's going on with the current case with the performers, we're trying to get to a settlement, but nobody knows what anyone is doing and the councilman, he, you know, he's not showing any leadership at all right now on this. And here, these are people that I came here for two and a half years, performers of Venice Beach who you all voted, you all voted to have an ordinance to protect them all against the vendors. And then all of a sudden, oop, the judge kicked out your whole lottery system. So the preliminary injunction is in effect. I'm not liking what I'm hearing because, you know, we tried everything to make a nice, happy settlement for, you know, the real damages and lost income from these people. So now we just have to go to some more litigation and maybe you'll lose some more and when you're tired of losing, maybe you'll do something.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Richard Robinson. Mr. Robinson? There he is. After that, we'll have Vic Nightingale.
Mr. President, members, the veneer of civilization is skin deep. Sir, the blatant crime that is in Skid Row is a result of homelessness. What is needed is a solution to the problem of homelessness. Homeless people are not the problem, the problem is homelessness. If society is to be protected, the revolving door mindset in Skid Row must be eradicated. If someone steps up to the plate and purchases the former million dollar hotel at Fifth and Main in downtown, the pit, as it's known, the pit area, the hardcore inner sanctum of what promises to be a true light at the end of the tunnel, pardon me for waxing poetic, medical doctors, psychiatrists, psychologists, social workers. Willie Brown started the Community Awareness Treatment Service Program in San Francisco when he was supervisor in 79. We can bring, sir, that concept out of San Francisco with Gavin's help, Gavin Newsom's help, and literally turn around, it's fascinating, the possibility of eliminating homelessness in downtown Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Our next speaker is Rick Nightingale in Van Nuys.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale.
Good morning, sir.
Yeah, I don't know what, back and after from the police department, you even knew, Mr. Garcetti, on the bullets. If you, um, they turn around about the bulletproof vests and so forth. Yes, I don't think they should have, I think it's a silicone bullet and so forth, but when you turn around and bring hollow points into it, you people better learn to know what you're talking about and maybe talk to Mr. Stein or something like that. And even our chief's mentioned hollow point bullets going through a vest, they don't do that. That's not what they're designed for. They will not go through a bulletproof vest. The silicone bullets and so forth will. And you're trying to pass the law in the city here of outlawing those bullets, you're misleading the people completely. Why don't you be honest for once in your life and be honest about the situation? Yes, when they hit a person, they do more damage, you're absolutely correct, but why hurt a few for some little? You know what I mean? You're turning around and trying to outlaw something, you're trying to turn this into a state that, or a city that is just outrageous of all the laws that you're trying to pass in that, but you're not being honest. And I'd like to see Dennis Stein say something like this because he is a professional and was in that category more than anybody else up there, to say something that that was a bunch of bull. I'm telling you, that's outrageous what you, what the chief of police and you people said because it was wrong. And you're trying to pass them and threaten and scare the people. That's what it was all about, threaten and scare the people like you usually do. And then let's get over to our governor about his speech about the CRA. Man, he's coming down on it and you people won't face it where all the money's going. How many millions and millions and millions of dollars are going into that and we're all starving for everything else, for our trees, the roads and so forth, but you won't stop a dime for the CRA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. Our next speaker is Ruth Jean Weinberg, she'll be followed by Arnold Sacks. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. I want to tell you about our experiences since a very long and laborious remodeling of my husband's property that he inherited after his brother's death in 1982. We've had to go through two very almost harrowing experiences with two different sets of tenants, both very much attached to the movie industry. We were the victims of two crafty so-called agents, a Chris Corso, who acknowledged that he did not have a real estate license, which we reported to the real estate board and the last agent who we first, who we found was double dipping into our profits and who we have since discharged. I am acting as the agent of this property, which basically I remodeled, I have an interior designer's license. Holding in on the last man, a Jeremiah Wright, he did not have a contract with us to lease this property at 739, 741 North Harper Avenue, Los Angeles 90046, although he charged us to rent our premises in September 2009. I bring this up because from what I read in the real estate manual, which I bought, that without a contract, he did not have authorization to rent our property at all. Therefore, it follows that any lease he prepared is not valid. Therefore, our present two tenants who we have just caused, have just caused to evict, but who together have conspired to remain in this apartment, which should be renting for thousands of dollars more.
Thank you, ma'am.
Over market value.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I'm sorry to interrupt you, ma'am, but we have to keep things as even as possible and so it's two minutes per speaker, that's why the clock is right there, but thank you. And our next speaker is going to be Arnold Sacks. If you have any further information, we'll be sure to get a council deputy to come talk to you. Thank you very much, ma'am. Mr. Sacks is our next speaker?
Yes, thank you, good morning, Arnold Sacks. I'd really like to take this opportunity to thank the new governor, Jerry Brown, for bringing some open and transparency to the city of L.A. You know, his deal to take back the redevelopment funds, who would have guessed that the city is sitting on, was sitting on $980 million in redevelopment funds? 980 because less 50 million for the Eli Broad. Who would have guessed you had $980 million? That, and you look at, you got a commitment of almost $700 million for our funds, 1.6 billion dollars in commitments in two funds, how much is spent on that so far, since last August, let's say? What are the policies of the CRA? How do you get $930 million? Remember when you were discussing the DWP and the transfer and Wendy Gruel did an audit and said they had $700 million in funds set aside? CRA's got $930 million in funds set aside. Good thing none of the councilmen constituents live in any place that's blighted, using CRA funds. There was an item last week on the Aladente area, the CLA is going to designate a CRA or somebody else to sign, to spend their money, not CIA money, but the Aladente funds, 35 million, 35,000, 50,000, whatever it is. It is unconscionable. People want a way to know who to vote for? If your councilman isn't putting money into your graffiti areas and yours, don't vote for him. $930 million, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. And just, I know you weren't sure last week, it's Adalante, which is the East Side redevelopment project, in case they think it's an Italian restaurant, just want to make sure. Thank you, no problem. All right, we will close general public comment, thank you to all of our speakers today. We do have an appointment which we will take first and then, I know we're going to take item 23 before 11 for Mr. Reyes, but in the meantime, I'd like to ask Mr. Mootis to come forward for General Manager of Lasers nomination. And like to recognize our Chair of Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Parks, to frame our discussion. Congratulations on the nomination.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, we had our candidate before us at Budget and Finance and we'd just like to relate that, have him relate to, he has a long history with the pension fund, he's been at least twice an interim general manager, he's been there well over, I believe, a decade with his background and education, it certainly fits into the variety of things that we expect from the pension fund and his management. And I'd like for him to just give you some of the insights he gave us at committee as to what some of his goals will be and what he believes that his responsibilities are as relates to those who have a pension or expecting a pension in the future.
Be glad to, thank you, council member. As far as goals are concerned, the best thing we can do for the city right now is to achieve
As far as goals are concerned, the best thing we can do for the city right now is to achieve the risk-adjusted returns possible on our investments. That'll help our members and help to secure their retirement, as well as help reduce the contribution that we require from the city. Also, to be able to provide quality and cost-effective health insurance for our members. And also to be an organization known for its best practices throughout. And certainly, there are challenges in the way, as far as the investment returns and the city's contribution. We're certainly doing all that we can on our side to ensure that there's a reasonable contribution on the part of the city. As far as my responsibilities is to lead our wonderful staff that we have at Lasers in the investment arena, as well as in providing benefits to our members, both active and retired, and also to be cognizant of the situation that the city is in with its finances.
Could you explain, and often there's some confusion as to what are some of the parameters that the state law puts in place as relates to your function and also what, how it impacts city council and the influence of those outside of the board and your operation as relates to impacting the pension fund?
Our department's a little different than most city departments in that there's a California Constitution provision in relating to pension systems. And also, the city charter mirrors the California Constitution to make sure that we are able to act with the fiduciary duty in the best interest of our members and a secondary fiduciary duty to the city.
Okay. And then could you explain, I think we've had these discussions before, what is the current plan and kind of explain what corridors and also the smoothing effort and how your board and your actuarialists look at that as it relates to the fund? But explain that just briefly, so people understand the tools that you have available in the sense of managing that fund.
Sure. My board president, Roberta Conroy, is sitting to my left. And the board took an action this last year in order to change the smoothing of the assets from a five-year period to a seven-year period, helping to smooth out the city's contribution over time. It still is the same contribution. The fund is not shorted in any way by smoothing that over a longer period of time. It just helps the city manage the contribution better. The corridor is in conjunction with the smoothing period. When we had a five-year smoothing period, it was perceived by our actuary that there was no need to have a corridor. And what the corridor does, it helps ensure that the market value and the actuarial value of our assets don't get too far apart. With bringing in the seven-year smoothing period that our board adopted, there was perceived to be a need for a market corridor, which once again is just to make sure that the market value of our assets and the actuarial value don't get too far apart. And it's just basically a second check to make sure that the funding for our system remains reasonable and strong.
And just so people understand that liability that you're talking about smoothing, it doesn't go away, you just pull it over a larger, a longer period of time?
Correct. The cost of the system doesn't change regardless of the smoothing period. The cost remains the same, it's just a matter of helping the city manage its contribution amounts over the years.
Let me get us, the President of the Commission, give us some insight of what you went through in making this decision, so we have a comfort level of the process that went forward.
The process actually is under the guidance of our actuaries and also what is common best practices with other pension systems. The idea is to manage the volatility of the contributions. And after the significant market declines in oh eight, obviously, there were huge losses to Lasers, which more or less have come back. But it's an actuarial process in order to smooth out so that the actual city can better manage the volatility of the contribution.
Now, you answered my second question, I may have not made it clear. I wanted you to give us what the process to select him as the general manager, so we have some insight, what you went through and what was the process.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question. The process is to interview, basically Ruth can help out with the details, but we did publicize the position. We had an interview process. Tom interviewed with only one other candidate, because the city requirements basically didn't permit a large number of candidates to come in and interview with us. So he was one of two. My board was very enthusiastic about basically appointing Tom, because he had been up for consideration in two thousand eight, where we had a split vote with some members of the board that were still on the board now voted for Tom. So it was, it was more about process than seeking the best candidate, because I believe our board always felt that Tom was the best candidate, especially in light of his experience with Lasers and being interim general manager.
Thank you very much. The colleagues, the board or the committee overwhelmingly supports this appointment. In addition to being an interim for two periods, he was the assistant general manager for a long period of time. And so I think for the qualifications education, I don't think we could have found a better person. So the committee on a unanimous vote presents him for confirmation today.
Mr. Zion.
Thank you, Mr. President. The funding, how are we funded right now? The liability versus the asset?
The current funded status for the retirement benefits is seventy-five point nine percent. For the retiree health benefit, it's sixty-three point eight percent, which is a really amazing number, given that most pension systems throughout the country do what is called pay-as-you-go on their retiree health benefit, which means they don't pre-fund at all. And the fact that we're sixty-three point eight percent funded is a great number for us. The total funded ratio between the retirement and health is seventy-four percent.
And how does that compare to the Fire and Police Pension Fund?
They're higher funded on their retirement benefits than we are, and I believe a little less funded on their retiree health.
And do we work with them when it comes to the investment strategy, how we invest and how we get a better return on our dollar?
Well, basically, we have a general fund consultant at Lasers and some sub consultants to help us with the asset allocation, help the board determine what is the best asset allocation for our system. We certainly keep an eye on what Fire and Police is doing, and Mike Perez, the general manager of Fire and Police, and I are in constant contact, not only regarding investments, but other topics where we can collaborate.
And those folks get paid for that service, whether we benefit or not? Is that correct?
They do. The consultants do get paid, and I believe that if you look at our returns over time, they compare very favorably with other pension systems.
And if they're not performing, those consultants, do we then swap them out with some that can bring us a better return for those funds?
We certainly, the board keeps an eye, and I help them and staff helps them evaluate the consultants and hold their feet to the fire, as it were, and make sure that we have the best consultants possible for our members and for the city.
And they serve at the world of board?
Yes, they do.
Okay. The impact of the early retirement on Lasers, what is the impact on the early retirement in Lasers?
There's been a very big impact on Lasers. We basically retired about five years worth of people in one year. And so instead of about forty million dollars a month in outflow for benefits, it's now sixty. And so there's been a significant increase in the amount of benefits that we pay, which impacts our cash flow and how we can invest our money.
And how do we fix that? Or do we fix that?
Well, we have benefits that we're required to pay to the members that have retired. And so the best thing that we can do going forward is just to do the best we can, as we are, with getting the best risk-adjusted returns that we can to help the system with its cash flow.
And the percent of an individual employee into the pension fund, what percent are they putting into the fund now?
Members currently pay six percent, and as of the new fiscal year, will be paying seven percent.
And is there a max on how much we can require the employee to put into the fund from their compensation?
That would be subject to changes to the ad code, the administrative code, and would be either meet and confer or meet and consult, depending on the advice from council.
Because we hear a lot about pension funds, and we hear a lot about pension funds not being able to sustain themselves, whether it be the state level or local levels, and we hear of bankruptcy because of pension funds. How do we protect the assets of the pension funds, as well as the taxpayers, and provide the service? How do we pull that all together?
Well, there are a lot of moving parts on that question. Basically, from the investment perspective, we had a twelve point nine percent return last fiscal year. So far this year to date, we have about a fifteen percent return. So on the investment side, you know, doing the best we can with our asset allocation, which some folks believe it's attributable for about ninety percent, up to ninety percent of your return numbers. That's only part of the component. Our board annually adopts, based on the actuarial valuation, a percentage of payroll that's required by the city to pay us to fund the system and maintain good funding. Then what happens with that percentage is that comes across and is married with the payroll number that comes out of the budget process. So it depends on the city-covered payroll, covered Lasers members, as far as the payroll goes, as well as the percentage coming from Lasers as to what the city's contribution is. So managing the amount of the compensation in the city and that the percentage gets multiplied by to create the city's contribution would be one way to control that.
And give me those two numbers again, our return last year and the return this year?
The return last year was twelve point nine percent, which exceeded our eight percent assumed rate. And so far this year, we're at about fifteen percent un-audited.
So twelve point nine percent, fifteen percent, and if we look at what institutions are paying, lucky if they get one percent or one and a half percent
Yes, indeed.
On their investments.
Yes.
So people should invest in the city of Los Angeles?
Absolutely.
Okay. How long you been with the city?
I've been with the city over twenty-six years.
Okay. And you obviously know what you're talking about.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Tom. I want to rise to support you. First, I'd like to take a moment to ask you to introduce your family who's here to support you.
Absolutely. Unfortunately, my wife could not be here, but I have my son Ethan, my daughters Jenna and Gianna, and a couple of dear family friends, Berta and Annie.
Well, great, Tom. Let's give them a little cheer right there, because your daddy helps us. Now, I think in Mr. Parks's questioning, I believe, some numbers were put out there, which is good. How much is this online? How much is it right now, if anyone in the public wanted to know what our obligations are? And you mentioned the sixty-two percent funded at this point. How much is that information kind of online?
Our valuations are online for the past several years. And so we also have our comprehensive annual financial reports that are also available at lasers.org.
And do you know, and I know disrespect to anybody else, but how do we rate us as opposed to the county or other systems?
It is very difficult to make an apples-to-apples comparison among retirement systems. We have a strong funded ratio compared to many systems. And like I say, the really proud point that we have, that the city can take a lot of credit for, is pre-funding the retiree health, starting back in nineteen eighty-seven and eighty-eight. We're way ahead of the game on that.
Right. And the other thing to do, as we were talking earlier on, historically municipalities, cities, governments felt that it was important to have a separate system. I know in my, I get a little note every year from Social Security, and it dates back to the late sixties, when I worked in the high school. But now with the city for many, many years, I'm not on the Social Security system, but I'm on a city system. Why is that historically? Do we have, was it out of, do you know historically why there was two separate systems?
Well, many of the retirement systems, the public systems, were created in the late thirties. And so there was a perceived need back in the thirties to create such systems to be able to attract and retain employees into the public
Out of the Great Depression
Yes.
That was created. And the WPA era. Tom, I thank you. You're always very dedicated to the city, which is so key, since I've been around here quite a few years to it. I know in every role that you had, so we're very thankful to have you here and always give us the good news and the bad news, because it's so important to have your news, because of the impact on our ability to serve the people as we do. Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. And our next speaker will be Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and congratulations again on the nomination. And it's been great working with you in the past. I look forward to working with you in the future, because the way we design our time here is, once you start talking, it's on our time. I'm going to ask you four questions and then ask you to answer them. And thank you to the family for being here as well and your support of Tom. One, I think folks, I know the answer's a couple of these, but I'd like to make sure the public knows, because they hear a lot about pension crisis out there. Compared to the top eleven cities in America, how well-funded are we in terms of Lasers? Where do we rank on that? Second, in looking at the national cry for reform of pensions, what do you see as smart ways of reforming pension moving forward? We have on the ballot, we know the sworn side will be moving legislatively, some changes here through the civilian side. Be very curious to know your opinions on what sort of changes you think are reasonable and sustainable. Third, can you highlight some of your local investments and what sort of philosophy you have in terms of finding smart local investments that help our local economy here? And then fourth, and maybe this is the trickiest one and the most important one for me, because once you get there, and we do for good reasons have kind of a barrier between those of us that are policymakers and you making decisions on Lasers, but there's often sometimes a feeling of, okay, we're balancing the budget here, doing that work. You have to do your duty to make sure you look after the pension fund. But there are decisions you can make which are easier for you, but put a lot of hardship on us here. And the sustainability of that, you know, that you can change formulas, you can look at things, you can alter policies that do the best for your pensioners, but often harm your future pensioners that are here, working for the city of Los Angeles, because they expand the budget deficit. Or vice versa, don't necessarily look at the current fiscal situation of the city and look at how the pension system can be helpful, in a way that's still responsible, but there is a, there's a spectrum there. And I really want to hear what your philosophy is towards, you know, the city budget. It's not your responsibility to bail the city's budget out, but in that we bail you out, in essence, because of the way we will increase cash payments to you before we provide services to the people of Los Angeles. And whenever we explain that to folks, you know, our first obligations are actually to our pensions, long before we even provide services to the people of Los Angeles. That's what our obligation is. People kind of scratch their heads. And I think there has to be, on our side, that continuing responsibility, which I think we've been good at, which is why with question one, I think I know the answer to how well-funded we are. But also vice versa, what you can be doing to help us in those tough times really leads to greater sustainability for you, because it's a healthier general fund that can help contribute to the pensions. So those are my four, if you got them all.
Okay. Let me see if I can pick those off. As far as the top eleven cities, our funding ratio is better than many of the top eleven. And I think that the city has been very responsible and our board has been very responsible over time to make sure that's the case, not only for the retirement benefits, but also the retiree health benefits.
Just sorry to interrupt. I think the Pew study that I saw, at least from this past year, was that we were number one of the top eleven. Is that still the case?
I believe that's still the case. They're about to come out with another one, I believe, so we'll hope that we retain that top spot. As far as smart pension reform and the national reform, you know, each pension system, each entity jurisdiction has to look at its own benefit structure, and not just the retirement benefits, but the whole package of benefits that an employee receives for working for that jurisdiction, which includes the pay and the other benefits, such as health, that come before the retirement benefits. So it's a whole package of benefits that I believe that any jurisdiction should be looking at. We have what is a good, secure, defined benefit, which is based on a formula. And the benefit, basically, the average benefit for our members for a service retirement is thirty-six hundred dollars a month. We also provide survivor and disability benefits that are much less than that. The areas of reform, I know that the council and the CAO have been looking at various areas of potential change to our retirement benefits, and we have worked as subject matter experts to help provide information on that. And they're looking, the CAO is leading the way on much of that, and they're looking at the same cost elements that other jurisdictions are looking at, the retirement age, the retirement factor, the retiree health benefits, the CPI increases in retirement. So those are the correct factors to be looking at, but of course, still within, looking at the total benefit package that are provided to city employees. As far as local investment, sometimes it's hard to quantify local investments, because of our investments, much of it's through the public market. But I can tell you that on our private equity investments, California-based investments account for six hundred fifty million dollars of investments, which is about thirty-two percent of our private equity portfolio. And Los Angeles-based private equity accounts for two hundred fifty-four million of that. And so we are cognizant of our local investments, and when we have equivalent investments, that one's local and one's not, you know, we certainly recommend to our board that which is locally based, all things being equal. As far as the benefit philosophy, you know, there's been a lot of discussion and debate over, especially the last couple of years. And, you know, back ten years ago, the discussion was, who owns the excess money in the funds? Because most of the pension funds were over a hundred percent funded. With that funding ratio coming down, there certainly has been more of a look of what the pension systems can reasonably do within their structure to serve their members, but also there is a secondary fiduciary responsibility to the city that I know that our board feels and our staff believes as well. And in that light, the seven-year smoothing came about through our board. Going from the five-year smoothing to the seven-year smoothing will be saving the city a significant amount of money over the next five years. So it's looking at the city, and as you mentioned, also our future members. That's something that That's something that we asked for advice from our city attorney and also outside fiduciary counsel on the types of things that we can look at and the board can look at when making policy decisions in relation to their pension fund. And certainly looking at the, being able to maintain the jobs of our current employees and also the potential to have future employees come in and also have a good, defined benefit available to them upon their retirement is something that we definitely keep in mind.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I see no other speakers on the queue, Mr. Clerk. So the item is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, that passed. We're going to take item, congratulations, and good luck. We're going to take item 23 now, from Mr. Reyes.
And Madam President, a substitute motion has been circulated on that.
Is the motion already on the table? It's one that supports the technical, technical adjustments and asks for an a vote.
Okay, if that's accepted, then as friendly, without objection, we'll go ahead and prepare the roll on item 23, and please tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, that is approved. We'll take the cards, if we can, I think, fourth with, please, without objection. Take the card, I think we just have a single card on 17 and 18. Let's take those comments from Donna Perman on 17 first, in Van Nuys.
Counsel, President, number five, fourth with, that's what.
Okay, and five, fourth with, as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Perman, we have items 17 and 18, if you want to do those back-to-back.
Okay. Anyway, first, anyway, the next year, because we're going to have a shortfall, $350 million, and 80% of the shortfall is going, is because of the CRA. And now they're having more CRA projects. It's adding to the deficit. How do we get back and cut back the deficit? The city employees will lose benefits, or they'll make the public or the city employees pay more, and our car services will be cut back. The city employees are also paying into Medicare. Pension contributions is getting a, getting a bigger, 1% will go to the agency. Anyway, they get a sympathy and money to the CRA. They're getting a sweetheart deal. Anyway, the CRA is taking all our property intax, the property tax money. We only get so much money. And when the CRA has more and more projects, and you won't seem to cut back on any projects, you go into an area and you decided this area is blight. The areas that we're talking about, especially on Reseda, are not blight. They're perfectly fine. We just need more regular development, regular places that will pay for themselves. We don't need to have the CRA. Remember, the Prop L didn't really help the libraries enough, because we still had a day off. The trash fee didn't help the police. They, now, nothing's guaranteed by the politicians. Anyway, we need to stop having these CRA projects. Anyway, because, I can't think of what I'm writing. Anyway, we need to get rid of the CRA projects because they're the, oh, I can't think of the talk. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Perman. Do you want to speak on number 18 as well?
Yeah, okay.
Come on back. There you go.
This one, I believe. Okay. Let's see. I got to think of how to write. Okay, this is another area. This is one over there in Bunker Hill and downtown. And the reasons the places have so much problems is because nobody can be able to, there's not enough money in the areas to take care of these cities. That's why they look like, that's why they're blight. Because you won't allow the cities, cities to be able to have this money that they should be having. And all that money will be going into big buildings that they don't need, huge office buildings, huge, big development. And this is a, CRA is a private agency using public money. Anyway, as I said, anyway, all cities, cities will never be in any good condition. They will always be what you consider blight, as long as they're not giving money that should be given to them. Just think about, if you were to take all that money away and let people to have all their property taxes and take, don't give it all to the CRA, think about what we could do for the city. We can completely do it really well. And that would come from the money that we have from our property taxes should be going to take care of, taking care of the city, not be giving it to the CRA. But of course, that won't happen, because city council is in love with the CRA, and then the CRA will then help them when they do their campaigns. We need to get rid of Mayor Antonio Vargosa for going over there and talking our governor into not going after the CRA.
Thank you. And Ms. Perman, if you'd like to speak on number 16 as well? You have one minute left.
Okay, one minute left is, is that the one on Reseda? Okay, we need, as I said, to continue. We need, we need to have, we need to go after, I can't believe Antonio Vargosa would go over there and tell the, our governor that we need the CRA, talking, oh, they get jobs. And these are what we call the temporary jobs, and only for while the construction is going on. What we need to have is more businesses of that, that the CRA type. That's the ones that would help us. And getting on, jobs that will stay, stay there all the time, and not just something that's temporary. Men, so we need to, you know. Anyway, Mayor Antonio Vargosa needs to be recalled because he's bringing all these CRA projects, four CRA projects, each one costing a million or $2 million each. That's why our money is going to our folks, the CRA. Can't you say no for once on a CRA project?
Thank you, Ms. Perman. Mr. Cardenas on item 16?
Thank you very much. I don't know exactly what that member of the public was referring to, but basically, this has to do with authorizing the award of a design contract not to exceed $265,480 for design work that's going to happen in Sun Valley with an EDA public improvements project. And this is, a project is at approximately $4 million. This is a perfect example of the government getting involved and helping out a community, building out infrastructure, and actually creating temporary jobs and improving the environment for the community long-term, and improving an environment so that we can continue to have permanent jobs as well. So I just wanted to thank everybody involved with this project so far, and thank CRA and EDA and everybody else involved for all the wonderful work that they've done to bring it forward to where it's at, and it will continue to go forward with your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. We can open the roll on 16 and 17 and 18, please. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
As approved, we'll send 16 forthwith.
Thank you.
Without objection. Thank you. We'll turn now to item number seven, and I'd like to recognize the Chair of our TCT, Ms. Han.
And Mr. President, for the record, there is what should be termed a substitute motion. It has been circulated.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, good morning. I know we have several people in the audience that have come from far and wide to speak on this issue. Colleagues, this is the 245 motion, where we asserted jurisdiction a couple of weeks ago, over the decision that the Harbor Commission made to basically end discussions about building a state-of-the-art union green shipyard at the former Southwest Marine site. As you know, the issue really was about where the dirt was dumped from a $100 million channel deepening project at the Port of Los Angeles. And the location they decided to dump about 163,000 cubic yards was in the last two remaining operational slips in the harbor, which would have made a perfect location, many people thought, to build a shipyard, bring a shipyard back to the Port of Los Angeles, which would provide good union jobs, which would provide skilled jobs, which many people in the harbor area remember the days when we had a shipyard at the Port of Los Angeles. And the reason we wanted to assert jurisdiction, and by the way, what we did in my committee last week was actually a perfect example of asserting jurisdiction. We had an almost four-hour hearing where I was able to hear thoroughly all sides of this issue. And I was able to sit there and ask questions that I had not been able to ask before, of port staff, of our attorneys, of the Army Corps of Engineers. And what was said, basically, was that anything that we did differently at this point, to analyze a different configuration of this dirt, to find another site to dump this dirt, in any way change the schedule of this channel deepening project, could put at risk, we were hearing estimates of two to three years in deepening the channel. Now, everyone who spoke at my hearing, including me probably 100 times, said, in no way would we want to do anything that delayed the channel deepening project at the Port of Los Angeles. Because what that project really means is we're able to accommodate the next generation of large ships in our harbor, much like we're accommodating the next large generation of aircraft at the airport. We want to be competitive. We want to position the Port of Los Angeles to continue to have this market edge on bringing cargo to our port. Many people have estimated that this channel deepening project could create or sustain 10,000 jobs. And while the shipyard was estimated to bring anywhere from 500 to 1,000 jobs, I thought it was worth exploring. I'm all for 10,000 jobs, but I'm for 10,200 jobs. I'm for 10,500 jobs. I'm for more jobs at the harbor, which is why I have really pursued this issue. But with the opening of the Panama Canal, with new ports in Mexico, Houston, Canada, we really want to keep our competitive edge. So at the end of the day, while there is a huge support, colleagues, for building a shipyard at the Port of Los Angeles, there was also overwhelming evidence that anything we did differently at this point, unfortunately, would delay that project. I came to the conclusion that while my recommenda, or my, my communication from the committee, because I didn't have Councilmember Rosendahl or Councilmember Labonge at the hearing, so it was just me, and I had a communication, you know, we have two options, colleagues, with the 245. We can either sustain the action, or we can veto it and send it back for a different recommendation. Those are really our only two tools that we have with the 245. So I actually made a communication that I wanted to veto their action, because I did want to send this back. And I agree, they don't believe they can build it at this site. They want to end their discussions with Gamble Industries to build a shipyard. I wanted one more recommendation, and that was, find a location in the future. Make that a priority, to find a location to build a shipyard at the Port of Los Angeles. That's what I wanted to do with the veto, because that's really our only tools. But I will tell you, when I, when I went in to get my hair cut on Saturday at my regular salon, I walked in and one of the operators who does hair there said, oh, man, I just had someone in here, a member of ILW, and they said Janice Hahn vetoed the channel deepening project. So I knew then that we had a perception problem. We had a messaging problem. And I think, I want to assure the longshoremen, the men and women who work out on those docks who depend on that cargo coming in, that Janice Hahn in no way vetoed the channel deepening project. That project, by the way, is already moving forward. It's, it started last July, again, after a little bit of a delay. So it's moving forward, it's happening. All I wanted to see was, could we, could we deepen the channel and accommodate the next generation of ships, and could we build a shipyard at this historic location? Army Corps of Engineers and the port staff said no. We cannot have a win-win situation, and it's unfortunate. And I'll tell you, at the end of the day, I really thought the smart, brilliant engineers at the Port of Los Angeles could figure this one out. I really thought we could find a different way to dump that dirt, a different place to dump that dirt, a different configuration to dump that dirt, so we could keep those historic slips at the Port of Los Angeles. Unfortunately, we're at this point where they tell me no. So what I'm going to do today, colleagues, is introduce a motion that says, okay, we will sustain their action. They are, they're not going to designate that current site as a shipyard, but I'm going to ask them to come back and designate a location in the future for a shipbuilding and repair facility for large vessels at the Port of Los Angeles. And again, understanding that no action we're taking today, let me repeat, no action we're taking today in any way delays the main channel deepening project. Let's hear in that one.
Thank you, Ms. Han.
For my preservationist friends, who really wanted that historic site to be preserved, I want to request that the port reports back to my committee on the plans for those historic buildings at the Southwest Marine site. So I hope I have your support on that. We're willing to open up the public comment, but just don't make your comments about delaying the channel deepening project. We are not doing that, we've never done that, we won't do that in the future, but we do want to hear from those of you who came down this morning. Thank you, colleagues, and thanks for the extra time.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much. Gina Marie Lindsay can, no, I'm sorry, that's another head. Geraldine, yeah. Call her, Mr. Nichols. Can you come forward, please? I have some questions for you. Are you familiar with the motion, item 7A, that Ms. Han just mentioned?
Yes.
Was introduced? Okay. It basically, item one is in the motion, reiterates that she's asking that the council sustain the board's action relative to this matter. But there's also two additional items that I wanted to ask you, if you could please give us some perspective on. And the second, item number two says, request the board to designate a location for a shipbuilding and repair facility for large vessels at the Port of Los Angeles, with the understanding that this action shall in no way delay the main channel deepening project. What is your first understanding of what that request means, and how soon could you start to dialogue with this council and her committee, Ms. Han's committee, about that item number two?
We have an intention to undertake a master planning process for Terminal Island. I think the council knows, we've already been back before you, we spent a lot of effort planning San Pedro Waterfront, Wilmington Waterfront. Now the industrial area, the port, which is primarily Terminal Island, is the next, our next focus. And so it is our effort to, as part of that planning process, to look at a shipyard facility being incorporated on Terminal Island. We will do that. We envision the planning processes probably about, and we will make it a public planning process, about six to eight months of public workshops in order to arrive at a plan. And then, once the plan is done, we would kick off the environmental impact report process.
Okay, but unfortunately, when I hear master planning in the city of Los Angeles, I think 10, 15, 20 years before we actually see results. So I'll, because my time is short, they only give us three minutes. I'll go to question number three, excuse me, not question, but the request as item number three on motion 7A, which says, request the board to report to the Trade, Commerce and Tourism Committee on plans for the historic buildings at the Southwest Marine site. How soon could you see you and/or your staff making that report to the committee?
Yeah, we can make a report to the committee on any time of that. I have committed to the LA Conservancy, Lynda Dishman, that when we had designated a land use for that site, which has not been designated at this point, we would look at adaptive reuse of the buildings. of the buildings.
Okay. And also, what I'd like to ask Ms. Hahn, that number two also include a request, a report to your committee as well, to bring you up to speed on number two, in more detail of the timing or what the likelihood of the action items required for number two as well. So if you could do that, and I'm going to ask if we amend this, that item two and item three, those two requests, ask that the port staff report to the committee, is 30 days long enough, or 60 better? What works for you?
We can report at any time in terms of the process. One of the things that's coming up, actually this Thursday, is our board's having a special workshop on strategic priorities, so.
So 30 days fits well?
Thirty days is fine.
Okay. So my amendment, Ms. Hahn, is that the requests of two and three be that they report to the Trade and Commerce and Tourism Committee within 30 days. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Hahn, for going to that beauty salon, too, and hearing what people have to say. Folks, look, we're fortunate. We're very fortunate to have 43% of the trade in the great country we live in coming through our ports, the Long Beach, LA port. When that Panama Canal gets deepened, you know that Texas and the East Coast are hungry to take that cargo. They don't have a longshoreman's union that is strong and tough, they don't have the clean air requirements that we have done at the port, they don't have any of that stuff. So they're going to offer their places for a price lower than ours. I will predict this, we might have 43% right now, but when they open up that Panama Canal, it's going to be competitive like we've never, ever experienced. And I think the port leadership is already so familiar with that, and know that if we don't deepen that port for those bigger ships, that will be an added reason for them to go to Texas or go to the East Coast. So it's a no-brainer to deepen that port and sign those contracts with those countries and bring those bigger ships in. At the same time, Ms. Hahn, I would love to see us go forward with the shipping industry and build ships, too, but in no way do I want to tie anything to anything, because I'm going to keep that 43%, if I can keep that market share in the next 10, 15 years. So I'm delighted with your motion, delighted with everything. Let's move forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. And maybe we can even do more than keep it, but expand it. We have Mr. Labange is our next speaker for the first time, Ms. Hahn's for a second time, but we'll go to those public speakers in between after everybody's spoken for the first time.
Ms. Hahn, thank you. Thank you for being able to work with everybody and your passion for the Port of Los Angeles, for your passion for government affairs and working this thing out. And I think what was mentioned earlier, that the port is going to have a strategic planning session just this Thursday, which leads for an opportunity to have that voice and vision. You've had a voice and vision for San Pedro, okay? We know channeling is so important, we know the Panama Canal issues in Texas. I know there's a big game in Texas Sunday, but I don't want us to lose to Texas. I want jobs to stay in California. I love Panama, but I don't want all those ships to go there. But I wouldn't know anything, Janice Hahn, if it wasn't for your leadership and helping out. And whoever you visited on Saturday did a beautiful job with your hair, I just want to let you know. But I think it's important that we do this. The work that is necessary for the Port of Los Angeles is vital. I often reflect, members, on Tom Bradley and John Ferraro and those others who stood here before us in their vision. And this is a Tom Bradley moment, this is a John Ferraro moment, this is an Olympic moment, where the city is absolutely invested in something that will have an effect for well over a quarter of a century. So I stand to always support Janice Hahn, but I always want to support the Port of Los Angeles. Thank you very much, move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon.
Here's an offer that an elected official will take a bold position and then take a position...
Back down.
Take a position different than that. But in this case, we owe a debt of gratitude to Janice Hahn for standing up and fighting for jobs, because that's exactly what she is doing. The point is that we need jobs in Los Angeles, and if we could develop a shipbuilding operation, it would have a tremendous impact on our economy and the middle class developing in the harbor area. And so I commend her for fighting to build that middle class once again in Los Angeles. Nevertheless, we have real issues that have national and international implications. If we are going to be the world port that we can be, then we have to move forward with the dredging operation. And we should not hinder that. Every year that we wait is a year that some other country gains a new advantage, or some other port gains a new advantage. We don't need to give other ports that advantage. So I'm very pleased with the motion, I'm very pleased to vote for the Hahn-Cardenas motion. It is not a position of retreat at all, it is a position of asking the port to do everything possible to create a shipbuilding operation at the port, and I think that is a commendable action.
Thank you, Ms. Alakon. Mr. Kretz.
Yeah, I think everyone on this council recognizes the importance of the ports and keeping them competitive. Now, to be honest, though, I was never totally convinced that the Army Corps of Engineers wasn't being overly bureaucratic, and they couldn't actually have done both. I think that would have been the ideal, but the fact is, we have to rely on them for their technical expertise, and if they say this is the only way it could be done, ultimately we have to go with that. But I think it's critical to make every attempt to create a shipyard anyway. I think it makes sense, it's a win-win for the city of Los Angeles, hopefully we can find another way to do this. But I commend Janice for fighting hard on this one. I'm still a little skeptical about whether we could have done both, but we've got to do what we can for sure to save our ports and keep them competitive, so I think this is ultimately the right way to go.
Thank you. We'll go to our public comments speakers now, folks who have been very patient, and we'll start with our mayor, McCollin, if you'd like to come forward, from mayor of Highland and leader of SCAG, and then former councilman Rudy Savornich.
I just want to thank all the council members, especially you, Councilwoman Hahn, thank you for supporting the port and the maritime industry.
Appreciate it. The microphone, it used to be on this side, I know, but welcome to that side of the microphone, sir.
Thank you, President Garcetti, and members of the council. I want to thank you for opportunity to speak today. My name is Larry McCollin, I'm president of the Southern California Association of Governments, affectionately known as SCAG, and also the mayor of the city of Highland, which is in San Bernardino County. I want to thank you for your warm welcome today, it's much appreciated. As an elected official, I understand that the item before you is a local issue. SCAG is not here to advocate for a position. However, as a long-range planning agency and clearinghouse for environmental documents for the region, I wanted to provide the council some information that may be useful in your deliberations. As you know, the ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles are critical to Southern California's global competitiveness and our region's employment base. So much so that a key component of SCAG's development of an economic growth strategy for Southern California is beat the canal. With the upcoming expansion of the Panama Canal, opening up new options for larger vessels, a real threat of reduced economic activity in this region exists. To counteract this, SCAG supports accelerating goods movement infrastructure implementation in Southern California to ensure economic competitiveness. SCAG believes that it is in our best interest to carefully assess approved projects and collaborate with local agencies to support their implementation. It is also important to note, one of SCAG's responsibilities is to serve as the clearinghouse for environmental documentation. And projects that are deemed significantly, regionally significant, submit their environmental documentation to SCAG. Throughout the planning of the port's main channel deepening project, SCAG has received a copy of these reports on multiple occasions, and have indicated in our IRR clearinghouse report that channel deepening project is of significant importance to the region. So thank you again for giving me this opportunity. Thank Ms. Hahn for her leadership, and Miss Council for your leadership. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Rudy Savornich, lean, mean, fighting machine, from the city of San Pedro.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, Rudy Savornich Jr., former councilman representing Al Larson Boat Shop. Kudos to Councilwoman Hahn. In the last half hour, I have seen our councilwoman move from a councilwoman to a stateswoman. And I think of anyone in this audience and anyone at home that can make that declaration, I am uniquely prepared to do that. Councilwoman Hahn, you fought for the people of the harbor area, you fought for jobs, but you also realized that there needed to be some minor tweaking of a motion in order that this came out right. Everyone in the harbor area, everyone in this audience should be proud of you. I am. I was proud to support you to be on the city council, I am proud that you are sitting there. Because it is difficult at times, colleagues, as you all well know, not just to be a council member, but to be a statesperson. And today, Janice Hahn rose to the occasion and became the statesperson that we all know that she is. On behalf of my client, on behalf of those that had some concerns, what was coming before the council, those concerns are gone. The amending motion is appropriate, it stands up to good city and public policy, it is the direction that we should now be going, and it took a stateswoman to realize it. Everyone in this audience who's a constituent of Janice's, and everyone who's a constituent at home, deserves and should stand up and applaud our stateswoman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas, I think Mr. Savornich has a question for you.
President, on Mr. Savornich's time, former councilman Savornich, I just got to ask you a personal question, since you got personal. Do you get your haircut at the same place that Ms. Hahn does?
Our barbers will never tell, and neither will I on the microphone, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. Joe Cortez is our next speaker from ILW. After that is Danny Miranda.
I was up here ready to present a lengthy speech, but after hearing what's happening, I'm proud of the direction we're going. You know, you're talking about ports that are competing, we're not only competing with ports from the east and the Gulf, but we're also competing against my own brothers from the northwest, ports in Seattle and Tacoma. They're spending lots of money enticing shippers and ships to move up north, you know, and right now, we're meeting with both the ports of Los Angeles and Port of Long Beach, trying to beat this canal. And one thing I'm hearing is that they get better service up in the northwest, but Port of Los Angeles is the number one port in the nation. This port belongs to all of us here, not only to the people in the harbor area, but the whole city of Los Angeles. So I want to thank you for taking the direction you're taking, and thank you again.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Danny Miranda is next. After Danny will be Rich Steins. Got two Danny Mirandas?
First of all, thank you very much, council, for allowing me to come before you today. Janice, really appreciate your working together. This is what it's all about, when we come together and work together. I really appreciate your decision to support the great administration of the Port of Los Angeles, and Dr. Nats and her group have done a fantastic job. And really, they ought to be allotted for keeping where we're at, number one. And our harbor commissioners, they've done a fabulous job in supporting their decision. I would say, we came here for a fight, and we came here very happy, so thank you very much for your time, Janice. Again, I appreciate all your hard work on this, and we're still going to be number one. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Steins, our next speaker. After that will be Peter Payton.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, President Garcetti, and honorable members of council. My name's Rich Steins, I'm president of the district council of the ILW. First, let me say, the ILW appreciates the support that Councilwoman Janice Hahn has always shown towards the union. We admire her commitment to create jobs in the communities she represents, and we value her friendship. A great deal of time and resources have been dedicated to the shipyard proposal, and we would also like to thank the harbor department staff and the Army Corps of Engineers for their efforts and due diligence. We support their findings that a shipyard cannot be built at the former Southwest Marine Site without delaying the dredging project that is critical to the economic growth of the region. We ask you to uphold the actions of the harbor commissioners and allow the dredging project to move forward on schedule. Finally, we ask that the dedicated staff be allowed to get back to work at running the busiest port in North America without further encumbrance on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Peter Payton is next. After Mr. Payton will be Michelle Grubbs.
Council members, first I'd like to say that, is our city attorney here?
He was, but...
Oh, okay, because I know he gets his hair cut at the same place Janice does. Let me say that there's something here that I think is very, very important, and that's a thing called perception. And one of the things we have to realize is that the world is watching the decisions that are made. And now, as a result of this decision, the world is going to be able to see that, no, we're taking it very seriously, that we are going to be competitive, and that we are not going to give our market share up, that 100 years of money that's gone into developing the ports is going to continue to move cargo quicker, faster, cleaner, and that we will be in this game for the long term. So perception today was a critical thing, and Janice, thank you very much.
Thank you. Michelle Grubbs is next, after that is Jessica Duboff.
Good morning, council members. My name's Michelle Grubbs, I'm the vice president of the Pacific Merchant Shipping Association. And Councilwoman Hahn, thank you very much. Thank you very much for all your effort on this issue, and thank you for listening to the tenants and customers of the port. Five of the major tenants that have been decades, customers of the port for decades, they account for 60% of the revenue of the port, and they would have been heavily impacted by anything that would have stopped the channel deepening. We appreciate your consideration, and we thank you very much.
Thank you. And the city attorney, let the record reflect, is back. We will ask him about his hair shortly. Jessica Duboff, and then after that is Julian Jimenez.
Good morning. My name's Jessica Duboff, I'm here from the Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce. The chamber is in support of sustaining the decision by the Port of Los Angeles Harbor Commissioners to proceed with the main channel deepening project. We appreciate all sides' dedication to studying the issue, and we thank Gamble for their efforts to bringing jobs to the harbor, though it has proven impossible to achieve a win-win scenario at the Southwest Marine Terminal Site and meet the competitive timeline posed by the Panama Canal and the East Coast ports. If the port and Gamble can locate another site that works for both of them and the other tenants at the port, that would be a win-win situation. In the meantime, we as a community should not do anything to delay the deepening project. Too many jobs and too much of our economy is at stake. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And it's a place called Mr. Ron's in Long Beach where he gets his hair done. Julian Jimenez, and then Suzanne Dominguez.
Good morning, council. Name is Julian Jimenez, I represent the labors local in Wilmington. I want to thank Janice Hahn for the great leadership that she provides for the people in Wilmington, San Pedro. Also, I want to recognize a friend of mine, David Arian, for his dedication that he gives down at the harbor. He's got my respect. We, the labors, are a big part of the backbone in the construction industry. We're supporting the dredging, we support Gamble in building a shipyard. But most of all, I want to thank all the union members for giving their support on keeping the harmony and moving forward with this great city that we live in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. And, Mr. Labange, I misspoke, it's Greater San Pedro, not Long Beach. Suzanne Dominguez is our next speaker, and then David Freelo.
Good morning, members of the council. I want to thank you for the opportunity of addressing this morning. I want to thank you for the opportunity of addressing this morning. I would firmly like to urge you to consider supporting the amendment that would allow further exploration of a shipbuilding facility in Port of L.A. I think everyone has stressed the fact that we want to remain competitive. I think part of that is not only shipbuilding, but ship repair. That's what we're lacking for the larger ships. I agree with the former council member who made the remark about doubting the Corps of Engineers' report on whether both operations couldn't continue simultaneously. I think that they probably could have, and I'm sure the Port of Los Angeles is an organization that can do more than one thing at a time. I would also like to see the council continue in this vein because, again, we're driving away private investment in the harbor area, and we definitely need that and the jobs that will bring. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. David Freelo is our next speaker. After that is Mary Jo Walker. Good morning.
Good morning, distinguished board members. My name is David Freelo. I'm with the Laborers Union, Local 802, out of Wilmington, California. I'm here in support of the Gamble Industries Shipyard Project. Councilwoman Hahn, I want to thank you so much for thinking outside the box, for helping to move this forward and not giving up, and for your determination in helping to create jobs, 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 and diversity. It's really disheartening that I hear council member Cardenas mention that these processes can take 10, 15, 20 years. We don't need jobs five or 10, 15 years from now. We need jobs now, not now, but right now. So, I pledge my support to you, Ms. Hahn, and anything that we can do to help, to continue to help move this forward, and the board of commissioners from the port. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Jo Walker is next. After that is Jaime Hernandez.
Good morning. My name is Mary Jo Walker. I do support Gamble as a shipyard. We do need jobs, different kind of jobs, diversify our harbor, but we do not want anything to slow down anything in our harbor. Also, that shipyard was built in 1917, just eight years after we became part of Los Angeles. We want to save those historical buildings as they are, right where they are, maybe bring them up to a little bit more standard because they are run down a little bit, but we do need to save our history in our area, not just for us now, but for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Jaime Hernandez is our next speaker. After that is Louis Dominguez. Good morning.
Good morning, city council, Janice. Thank you very much for supporting the labors. I just got to say that, you know, the process of a long-term plan, the bureaucracy with the Army Corps, the engineers, we're losing focus on what we need right now. We need the jobs. I've talked to hundreds of individuals out there, construction guys, 30 to 40% unemployment. That's unacceptable. Mr. Alarcón, we have, we have the guys that are unemployed right now. You know, when you say middle class, we're not middle class anymore. We're starving. Second, there's a concept of design-build. I know we can learn from this. The Army Corps of Engineers have got a problem with how they work the design. I worked at California Plaza, Jerry Paul Getty Museum. We were losing the 405 freeway when we were building the parking structure. We could have lost it overnight. You know what happened overnight? There must have been about 1,000 engineers trying to resolve that problem overnight. The next day, we had shore equipment out there taking care of the problem. You shut down the 405, you shut down L.A. What we're doing here is we're shutting down jobs. Thank you. Janice?
Thank you very much. Louis Dominguez is our next speaker. After that is Bob Stein.
Thank you. My name's Louis Dominguez from San Pedro. I am not representing anybody but myself. I'm here because I happen to love San Pedro and the port. I wanted to make one mention, there seems to have been a little conception of a them or us in this. If we supported Gamble, we were against the ILWU and the port. Nothing could be further from the truth. My daughter dates a longshoreman. I really want to see him keep his job. There are two other things, though, that worry me, and one is the eggs-in-one-basket idea. You know, we want to see the port competitive, but we also know, and I was brought up very well by a couple of councilpeople, that there is a lot coming that is going to impact the port. A lot of people want our business. We have to be a full-service port to be able to fight that off. We don't want to have everybody, you know, basically just one job doing that. If that goes away, we become a ghost town. I remember 1970 when there was 100-day strike, and the port wasn't nearly as important as then as it is now. It shot down businesses all the way to Arizona. We need to keep that port open because it really is the engine for us. The last thing I want to mention is that I was a combat infantryman in Vietnam. I dealt with the combat engineers. When we needed something, we told them what we needed, and they figured a way to get it done. I don't know what happens between when they're a combat engineer and when they go over to become the Corps of Engineers, but it just, it seems to be impossible that they could not have come up with a way to do both. I think the Corps of Engineers needs to start thinking outside the box like our councilwoman did. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Bob Stein is our next speaker. After that is Linda Dishman.
They both left.
Sorry, oh, they did? Okay. And we have yours coming. Don't worry, sir. Matt Dowd is our next speaker. After Mr. Dowd will be Liz Smigala.
I'm in favor, of course, of any of these projects to bring in good jobs for the people who live in the city. Here's what I do want to know. First of all, if we're bringing in these bigger ships and more containers, I want to bring up the point I mentioned about what you do with them once they get onto the land, how you move the containers around. You need to get federal money and build some kind of rail line to get all the trucks off the freeways. A tunnel. I mean, just, this is federal billions of dollars you can get. I keep saying it because, you know, what are you going to do? Have thousands more containers and then forget about having the Olympics here ever again? That's never going to happen. Here's what else I want to know, because, see, it costs a lot of money to do these things, and we fired thousands of employees in the city. And you had the laces people here before, and I want to know, let's get that money, what happened to all that money? See, we had a giant nest egg of money that we could use for these kind of things, and now the pension people lost all our money. All the city money's going to pay back the pensions. Now, where's the detailed analysis of how they lost, where did it all go? Because they're standing here talking about how they made, you know, 12% or 15%. It's the biggest bull market in history on the stock market. They should have made 50.
If you could bring it back to the shipyard, please, sir. If you could bring it back to the shipyard.
I'm trying to find out how we get more money to develop these more projects like this one. And one of the reasons is, one of the ways is not to trust the people who lost all the money that the city spent 60 years saving.
Our next speaker is Liz Smigala. After that is Ben Resnick.
Good morning, President Garcetti, members of the city council. My name is Liz Smigala. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Jeffrey Mangles, and I'm here today on behalf of Gamble Industries. I've been asked to read a statement prepared by Tom Politeo. Mr. Politeo is the chair of the Sierra Club Harbor Vision Task Force, and this statement reflects the position of the L.A. chapter of the Sierra Club and the task force. The Sierra Club supports the construction of the Gamble Shipyard to promote greening in an industry that needs it and to help develop diversity in the type of commercial activity carried out under the Tidlands Trust. We believe it is important in the trust to provide for diverse water-dependent activities in the San Pedro Bay. We believe the Gamble Shipyard can be built with no or very little delay on channel deepening, and the concerns of delay have been overblown. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz. Ben Resnick is our next speaker. After that is Elizabeth Warren.
Mr. President, before you start my clock, I guess when Linda Dishman left, her deputy is here, would like to take her time to be...
They'll fill out a card, since we can't see time to people, but we'd be happy to take their card.
Just fill out the card. Good morning, members. My name is Ben Resnick. I've represented the Gamble Shipyard here now for the last two, three years on this. This is a sad day here today, and I'll tell you why it's a sad day. It's a sad day when the city council has to be told it's one project versus another. It's a sad day when a Port of L.A. pits one union against another, pitting ILWU against building trades. It's a sad day when, two years ago, you adopted a motion to say you want this shipyard. You instructed your port to proceed. You signed an agreement, and yet, in two years, your port couldn't figure out how to manage a schedule, how to take a small amount of dirt that's contaminated, 80,000 cubic yards, and deal with it. It's because of that amount of dirt that we can't have a shipyard? You want to tell me that in two years you couldn't figure this out? And today, you're being presented with a it's-too-late scenario, there'll be delays in channel shipping, and woes to us, and the world will come apart in Panama Canal, and on, and on, and on. And you incite all the ILWU people because you think it's the end of the world. But you've had two years to make this work, and you've had a dedicated private enterprise willing to put in 50 to 70 million dollars to make this happen. You've blown it. You blew it. And it's a sad day when you've done that. Our solution was simple: no delaying channel deepening. We build a small wall, the Army Corps can put the contaminants in there, and we can proceed on schedule, and we'll study the shipyard. The Army Corps never said our solution doesn't work. Physically, it works. Logistically, it works. The only thing they're saying is they may need to take time to study it. It's been two years. It's been a year since we've proposed these solutions. So, who is really running this show? I will leave you with this. If the Port of L.A. had told the Army Corps, "We want this shipyard," the Army Corps would have worked it into its schedule easily, and that's a sad day.
Elizabeth Warren is our next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Warren. I'm the executive director of Future Ports. For those council members who may not be familiar with us, our members include businesses and stakeholders from all over California who have an interest in a robust goods movement supply chain. We have engineering, construction companies, transportation providers, and even labor groups as part of our members, and we all depend on the ports for our livelihood. We just would like to thank the councilwoman for her leadership in coming up with this solution, and to all of the council members for supporting that position, and also to our ports and the Corps of Engineers for working on this. We do want to fight to keep our ports competitive, retain our market share, and keep all of those good-paying jobs in Southern California. So, we just would like to urge the city council to sustain the action taken of the port and not to veto that decision. Thank you.
Adrian Scott Fine is our last speaker. Thank you for filling out the card. Appreciate it.
Good morning, members of council. I'm Adrian Scott Fine. I'm the director of advocacy for the Los Angeles Conservancy. For four years, the Conservancy has worked to save the Southwest Marine Shipyard, initially when the port proposed to demolish the entire site, and most recently when Gamble came forward with their plan to rebuild a shipyard on the site and reuse the historic buildings. The port states that filling in the slips does not preclude a shipyard at this site. And while technically true, it is highly unlikely that the port would allow a shipyard to keep the ships in the main channel while undergoing repair. This would leave only one option: to build new slips somewhere else on the site, which would potentially threaten one, several, or most of the historic buildings. The Southwest Marine Shipyard is the last vestige of San Pedro's once-mighty World War II shipbuilding industry, and it's also the last connection to L.A.'s Rosie the Riveter. The Conservancy and our 6,000 members stand here today in support of the historic Southwest Marine Shipyard, and we are definitely encouraged by the council's actions today to ensure that the preservation and the reuse, and mostly to defend these historic buildings just as the thousands of men and women who did and worked here during World War II to defend our country. We're encouraged by that action. We look forward to working with the port on the preservation and reuse of these buildings. And we definitely want to thank Councilman Hahn for her leadership in taking this on, her tenacity in looking at this effort and trying to make a shipyard happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's our last public speaker. We have Ms. Hahn for a second time. Sorry, Mr. Parks, for a first time. My apologies. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to send Ms. Kousi come up, and I think from the presentation she gave me, I think there were some issues that she made very relevant as to this issue, and particularly, I believe, some of the potential liabilities, and I thought maybe she could give us some insight on those issues.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. I'm not going to speak to liabilities, but I did want, one, first, to thank Councilmember Hahn for this motion. And I agree, and I think she was also right, that a year ago, more than a year ago, it's really a year and a half ago, in June of 2009, this council and the ports signed an agreement that said we would explore exclusively with Gamble the opportunity to put, to just find an alternative way to contain the dirt. That's what this was about. And our engineers did that. Our engineers said Gamble's proposal can work. So, again, when Mr. Resnick says that we didn't proceed in good faith, we did proceed in good faith. The, our port believed that this containment would work and that there could be a minor addendum to an EIR, and this could be accomplished in the one year of the exclusivity period. It was as we explored that with Gamble, to the other agencies that have a right of the process, like the State California Coastal Commission, they are concerned. There's a group called the Contaminated Sediment Task Force, which deals with Fish and Games and other entities at the state that guarantee we have clean water. And they said this structural proposal of Gamble's has worked elsewhere to contain dirt, but had never been used to contain contaminated sediment, and they needed more information, and more information was not able to be provided. Additionally, the Army Corps said structurally this may work, but we have processes, and our processes now are linked to this alternate proposal as a way of enabling a shipyard. And that's what this was all about. Our MOU said so. The Army Corps said, their legal counsel said, if they look at this alternate proposal, they also have to environmentally analyze a shipyard. And as a consequence, that's what takes the two to four years. It's not that the engineers haven't been willing. The engineers have been willing. The effort has been in good faith. It's the process, and those processes are enacted by California voters. When we enacted the California Environmental Quality Act and the California Coastal Commission, which said we have to guarantee clean water. That's what the hurdle that we ran up against in time. The exclusive agreement also said that while we were in this exclusive arrangement with Gamble, we couldn't look at an alternative site. We couldn't look for designating some other spot. Once the commission took its action in December and said, "We have explored and exhausted in good faith the remedy that we were required to do, let us close that door, terminate, say the MOU is over, and now roll up our sleeves to do exactly what Councilmember Hahn has asked. Look elsewhere. Designate a site." Councilwoman Hahn has been the champion, not only at the port period, but in pushing us to diversify, to say there are shipping, there should be shipbuilding areas, there should be fishing, there should be bringing back cannerys, there should be bringing all these other alternatives. Members, those are industrial uses that can go in Terminal Island. Thursday, two days from today, when the commission meets and does its strategic planning and sets in order to the staff what are our priorities for the next two years, we can, we will, I believe, say Terminal Island planning is number one. Start the planning, get that process done publicly, and let's bring back a shipyard. So, I wanted to just clarify that this was not something that we at the port terminated or decided to terminate early. We spent more than the year under the MOU really, really focusing on this and collaborating and cooperating with Gamble and the other state and federal agencies to try to make this happen.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to all who came down today to speak on this very interesting issue. There was passion all around this issue, but I think what hopefully we will get out of this is we will continue with our main channel deepening project, and we will get an answer back from the harbor commission. Hopefully, you can agendize this as soon as possible to say that it is a priority and that we will look to find a location to bring a ship repair and building facility. And to the building trades that have come and really spoken on this issue, the electricians, the pile drivers, the steel workers, I mean, those of you who have good skilled labor and who really want to see these kinds of jobs brought back to the harbor, please know that we will continue to work for that. Again, if we can bring 200 more jobs or 300 more jobs, I mean, I'm going to fight to do that. There are people out of work that need these jobs, and these are the kind of jobs that we want to see in our harbor. And I think the reason I really wanted to focus this idea of bringing a shipyard in the process of what we were talking about with Gamble Industries, because I think you will agree that we have heard from such an...
will agree that we have heard from such an interesting, diverse group of stakeholders on bringing a shipyard to the port of Los Angeles. We have heard from labor. We have heard from preservationists. We have heard from chambers of commerce. We have heard from neighborhood councils. We've heard from really just average community people who remember the days when there was a shipyard at the port of Los Angeles. The top 25 ports in the world, we are the one that does not have a shipbuilding and repair facility, and we want to change that perception of our port. So hopefully, colleagues, we're going to move in the right direction. But I don't want to end this before I will say, I do agree a little bit with Ben Resnick that it is a crying shame today. It really is. It's a sad day when we could not figure it out. And I understand everything Cindy just said, and it is a complicated process. But it is sad when you see those two deep-water slips at the port of Los Angeles, that we have to fill them up with contaminated soil. It is a shame that we could not figure out another way to do this. And I also want to say thanks to Gamble Industry, Bob Stein and Gamble Industry. This was a company that wanted to bring 50 million dollars of private investment into the harbor. You know, we're always talking about Los Angeles trying to attract private investment, trying to attract private dollars. This was a company that wanted to spend 50 million dollars to bring a green, state-of-the-art Union shipyard back to the port of Los Angeles. Their folks, their engineers, every time they were throwing a curveball, they worked hard to try to find a way to make this work. But I think what we are here today is, we just couldn't figure out how to make this work. But I think this is going to be a good solution in the end, and I really hope people stay involved in this project. We're going to hold the commission's feet to the fire, colleagues. I hope I can count on you to do that, to make sure that they don't let this idea drop about bringing a shipyard repair, building and repair facility to the port of Los Angeles. So with that, I hope you will support my amending motion that I had before you today.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. With that, that will close the discussion on this item, and we have the substitute motion. If there's no objection, we'll substitute that in, so that will be what we are voting on.
And that, as amended by Councilmember Cardenas, to have the report backs on recommendations two and three go to the TCT Committee.
Correct. Okay. Please open the roll on this item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you all very much for your time and for your work on this item. Just on a note of personal privilege, I wanted to welcome back Mr. Rosenthal to our council chambers. It's great to have you here. We missed you, and glad that you're here in full force.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank the folks out there that prayed for me and gave me their good wishes. And I'll talk more about the Watchmen Heart situation at another time, but it's a new technology. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Labange.
To call the comments of the President, welcome back, Bill. We love you, we're proud of you, and you continue great health.
Our last item is item number 14, and we do have cards on the public. We'll take those first, and then we will turn to Mr. Parks, Ann Williams from the Central City Association, and then Fred Gaines from VICA.
Good morning. I'm Ann Williams with the Central City Association. We're very concerned about the proposal to eliminate funding for the Planning Department's policy work programs. While this proposal would also cut funding for the important work of zoning code reform and case management, let's just focus on community planning for a minute. Community plans are foundational documents because they lay out the arrangement of the city's infrastructure, land use, and services. These are the city's core functions, and also functions that no other city, no other entity besides the city can provide. In recent memory, we have accepted that much of the community planning work has been stalled due to budget challenges, but there is a big difference between this work being temporarily on hiatus and facing total structural elimination. We think that now is exactly the time to be stepping up the work on community plans to encourage investment in a well-designed city. Investment flows to attractive, well-planned communities where the expectations on development are clear. And when our economy recovers, it's critical that these plans be cleaned up and ready to act as the rudders guiding the kind of development that our city wants and needs. So we respectfully ask that you restore funding for the Planning Department's policy work programs, and that you continue to protect this core function in future budget discussions. Thank you.
Fred Gaines. Good to see you. And our next speaker is Maya Zeitler after that.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, honorable members. My name is Fred Gaines. I'm here today in my role as a board member and past chairman of VICA, the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. And we're also here today to express our opposition to the recommendation in the CAO report to eliminate the Planning Department's policy work programs, including new community plans from the fiscal year 2010-2011 budget. Programs that would be eliminated if this cut was approved are zoning code reform, case management, and community plan updates. In this time of record unemployment for Los Angeles and in light of the city's budget crisis, we must work together to promote business jobs and revenue, the revenue that they create. Let me give you an example. As you know, I do battle sometimes with the Planning Department, but the work needs to be done. Earlier today, on your consent calendar, you approved a new vaan supermarket for one of my clients at Fairfax and Pico. The reason that we had to go through a multi-year process to achieve zone changes just to take an existing vaan store and expand it on the exact same property is because we have codes and zones that are inconsistent, we have plans that need to be updated, and the burden falls on the applicant to come forward and go through that process. And we delayed for at least a year, 200 to 300 construction jobs, 80 new jobs, good union jobs onsite at that store, because we had to go through and clean up multiple zones on a single site. This is a project that was unanimously supported by the neighborhood council. We thank Councilman Weston's office for helping us to shepherd through. But that's the kind of work that would be eliminated if these cuts went through, and that's the kind of work that we really need to have done by our planning department.
Yes, Mr. Cardenas.
The speaker had a little bit of time left. I'd like a point of clarification. You're speaking to the $1.1 million recommendation to the cuts of the Planning Department. The version that is before us now, the recommendation, is $150,000, so it's been reduced by almost a million dollars, so, which is probably most of what you were speaking to. Thank you very much for the civic lesson, but at the same time, you might want to get the current version of what's before us. Okay?
Well, we were provided one that showed $1.1 million. Certainly, the reduced...
But that just came out much more recently. I'm just trying to help you get the copy so you can feel better and know that we heard you before you even spoke. Thank you.
Maya Zeitler is our next speaker, then Veronica Perez. Okay. Is Veronica here? There she is. And after that will be Mitch Chalmers.
Good afternoon. I'm Veronica Perez from Holland and Nida. I represent the California Sign Association. Thank you, Councilwoman Cardenas, for that clarification. I think we in the public, this may have been a last-minute agreement that we in the public were not aware of, that there has been a reduction, so thank you for that, for the reduction in the cut to the Planning Department. I still would like to testify about that, however, because it isn't, it's my understanding that it's not a done deal, and things can change in this budget process. So we would like to testify about the importance of keeping that budget for policy programs and community plan updates for the Planning Department. These are critical functions that allow the Planning Department to work on policies and programs that help streamline the process for businesses and spur job creation. Programs such as zoning code reform, case management, sign enforcement, and community plan updates could be eliminated, and we're here to ask that they are not in the next budget. If they are eliminated, it would mark the first time in the history of the Planning Department since the 1920s that the department would not be planning for the future of our city. So thank you for agreeing to restoring that portion of planning's budget, and we ask that you, that keep that commitment throughout the budget process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Veronica. Mitch Chalmers? After that is Beverly Kenworthy.
Hi, my name is Mitch Chalmers. I concur with Veronica's statement about this being a reduction. We recognize that. But I'd like to speak on behalf of the California Sign Association in respect to those reductions. I'd like to propose the proposed cuts for the, excuse me, policy programs, community plan updates. Over the last couple of years, California Sign Association's been working closely with planning, on a plan to reduce visual blight in the city caused by illegal onsite signage, and as well, other ways to streamline the city's, excuse me, sign permitting process, which currently can be very time-consuming and cumbersome. And we'd like to see those initiatives continue. Building and safety's planning are currently preparing a report to Plumb regarding the feasibility of this sign code administration program, and any proposed cut to the planning budget might have an effect on those. We'd like to keep those in mind. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Beverly Kenworthy is our next speaker. Andrew Casana will follow. Lou.
Beverly Kenworthy with the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. Good morning, or maybe it's almost good afternoon. We understand that just the latest version is they're talking about $150,000 cut to the Planning Department's budget, which we understand that they can absorb. I think what we're concerned about is if, in lieu of the furloughs, and if the P3 agreement for the parking garages falls through, then it's going to put them back where we are maybe yesterday with the previous proposal of over a million-dollar cut. So we want to make sure that when we are looking at cutting services and for the city, that we don't cut services that might lead to economic development and sort of shoot us in the foot. So we hope you keep that in mind as this goes forward. Thank you.
Andrew Casana, and then Matt Dowd. Is Andrew here? If not, then Mr. Dowd? After Mr. Dowd, we'll rate.
Yes, thank you. I'm only here because we failed to settle, as was promised by the city attorney, so let me weigh in on this one, and this is a big one. It's the biggest one in the city. See, everything in the city of Los Angeles ties back to the Lasers' pension money because it's the structural deficit that they gave the city, the $600 million they owe the pension funds every year. That's the difference between the city being liquid or broke. So that's why I want the Laser people to tell us what they did wrong, where I don't want to trust them anymore. And because here we are now cutting, see, and we need to hope, hope that this parking deal does not go through. You know, please, Goldman Sachs are not sniffing around this because they're the benefactors of the city. They're the rogues who are responsible for a lot of the financial crisis because they convinced all the banks that all those bogus mortgages were AAA, and they convinced Standard and Poor, that, you know, Richard Alakon's trying to blame for the city's problems one time. So no, stay away from Goldman Sachs, fire some more people, and get the Lasers people who lost the money to explain to all these city employees why they're losing their jobs and why everything's getting cut and everything's going to furloughs. And I do notice one good thing: let's cut the city attorney's office. Oh, my favorite. I'm glad we got rid of Mark Brown. He can retire. Let me name some for you if you're looking for some attorneys to cut. How about Dion O'Connell? How about Todd LeYoung? How about Mike Nagel? Laurie Rittenberg's not too far from the chopping block. So these are some suggestions. And Cindy Mises-Kowski, if that was her, I knocked out your permits.
Will Wright was our next speaker, and then Noel Weiss.
Thank you for your patience. Good afternoon. Hello. Will Wright with the American Institute of Architects, and I do not envy your position here. I know the budget is quite a challenge right now, but I'm here to express our passion for the community plan process. This is absolutely essential for the city of Los Angeles. We want to remain economically competitive. One idea that I could propose that could be worth studying, and I have no idea how you would receive this, but perhaps if you take the general fund from Department of Transportation and fold that into Department of Planning and bolster some of those services, I think that could be something worth exploring. I might make a lot of enemies that way, but I still think that could be something to double the funding of general plan, and, thank you.
Thank you. Noel Weiss is our next speaker. After that is Michael Hunt.
Counsel, I want to talk about the P3 aspect of this. I'm concerned about a couple of things. One, I think you're getting bad advice from the city attorney as far as your discussions in closed session about whether or not to do the parking lots. If I was city attorney, it wouldn't be happening. You have not made a decision as counsel on whether or not to sell the lots, yet you're hiding behind a privilege, which, by the way, you can waive. And I would suggest strongly that this council waive because it's a question of public confidence of the people in the institution. And again, this is not a corporation. You are public trustees. It is a public trust. But more importantly, I want to go into the fact that we need, but before you decide even, you should not be behind closed doors in deciding what the terms of a possible deal are. More importantly, I think we can leverage a situation here and empower the people. I like Mr. Garcetti's idea that he communicated at Westwood about possibly giving a note, negotiating with the pension plans, and giving a note plus the lots to the plans. And, but I want to amend it a little bit by doing, going one further. And that is $3,000 times 100,000 people is $300 million. And you know what? Citizen empowerment is going on all over the world. Democratize, empower the people. And I think this would be a situation where the people can buy these lots, you can turn them into a situation where they're producing tax revenue. It may take some time to do it, but you know what? It's doable. This is the 21st century. We've got an opportunity. This city, just like J.P. Morgan, if you will, stood behind the U.S. government back in 1907 and 1895. You know what? The people, now, we are in a position where we can rise to the occasion. All we need is inspired political leadership to make it happen. There is no question that a city of $4 million, of 4 million people, can't find the dollars. If it's World War II, we found the bonds. I'm telling you, to sell those lots is a huge mistake, to basically violate the public trust, which I think the city attorney is sanctioning wrongly, is also wrong, and to the extent, again, under the Brown Act, for purposes of the record, please make the correction. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Michael Hunt here? Not, that'll close our public comments. We have one last one, sorry. Craig Jones, let's come forward.
I was just having a sit here. I'm in awe of the council. Thank God for the city council. Thank God bless America. I'm in awe. I guess I'm reading it right. Here, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. Are these like cuts to the neighborhood empowerment organizations, groups, people, constituents?
No, they're the neighborhood councils.
Okay. Well, the neighborhood councils are very important. I live in a, I think I'll call it a high-crime neighborhood. Originally from Dallas, Texas, born and raised. I came to Los Angeles. I got this nice plaque, it's typically from Ufkalanthar. But I think that the Harvard Park Neighborhood Council is very important. I had a cousin, he was murdered in Harvard Park, so my community activities are very serious. I think it would be detrimental to the, to the growth of the community. I've seen Ms. Janice Hahn come out to the community, I've seen the mayor come out to the community. This is the Harvard Park community. And I saw these councils come out, and they were saying they were going to support our neighborhood councils. If we do away with our neighborhood councils, the individuals in the community won't have the resources to let their grievances be addressed. I think a lot of constituents address a lot of their things through the neighborhood councils. I think it'd be very important, Mr. President, to keep our particular neighborhood council. We need ours in the, it's called the Harvard Park Neighborhood Council. We need that. If you do away with it, you're taking out, like, if you go from, from, from the east to the west, really, the zone that it would encompass, I would go all the way to Adams, back past Florence, and you know that Florence and Normandy is a hotspot. We've gotten our community back. There is no more shootings, there is no gangs, you don't hear law enforcement, you don't hear the helicopters. I remember when they shot, when the neighbors were shooting neighbor to neighbor. Because you guys invented these neighborhood councils, the constituents have a way of expressing themselves as an alternative other than using violence. You guys have seen, my community has decreased in crime. It's like a family neighborhood. I rather encourage, please don't take the neighborhood council.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments, and don't worry, the neighborhood councils themselves are not in danger of going away under this proposal. Appreciate your comments. Mr. Parks to open our budget share.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I have the city staff come up, CLA CAO, to the table? Colleagues, this item is a carryover from a week or so ago where we trimmed about $18 million from the budget, and this report before you is another 12. But before we get into that item, I'm going to ask the CAO to go through the report that was given to Budget and Finance. We'd ask that each one of you have gotten a copy of it, that if you follow along, there's about 10 or 12 charts, and one of particular interest is chart number six, that when we get into the revenues, because this is more recent and updated information... this is more recent and updated information that tells us where we are as a budget before we get into the report that's before us. And so, Ray, would you start off and just walk us through this report and give us the insights as to the current condition of the city's budget?
Sure. Thank you very much. Ray Schroner with the Office of the City Administrative Officer. What you have before you today is a report back on the, some alternatives for the alternative plan that we talked, came to this council back on the 14th. The presentation you're referring to was given last night to the Budget and Finance Committee out in the Valley. And we wanted to provide the city an update as far as where we are, some of the things that we have accomplished over the last couple of years, and what we have to look forward, what's in store in the future. So, the first slide basically gives a couple bullet points on what we have done as a city over the last couple of years, addressing and over a billion-dollar deficit over the two years. We have actually reduced our workforce by roughly about 4,000 positions. We've been able to bolster the reserve fund, and certainly with the ballot measure that we will have on March, except for seeing in the charter that emergency reserve account will help strengthen our position both as a city and our financials, but also as we go out and discuss our debt with the rating agencies. We're in the process of addressing a couple of the many drivers of our increased deficits. These are our pension and healthcare costs. And likewise, here again, in March, we do have a proposal to the Delaware, the sworn. And certainly, our revenues are finally stabilizing, and we're going to discuss those a little bit more in detail, but overall, we do see some stabilization. Slide two, it's a simple reflection of the adopted city budget. We got to a high of over $7 billion, and now, over the last couple of years, it has been reduced as we've made reductions. Slide three, here illustrates a point on the elimination of 4,000 positions. We had a high of 37,000 in 2007, '08, and now we're down to under 33,000. These numbers are, this citywide, do not reflect the proprietary departments, but certainly this illustrates how, how much we have actually reduced our positions over the years.
Ray, would you repeat that? What departments are not included in the 32?
This does not include the proprietors, so it does not include the Harbor Department, the airport, and the DWP.
Okay.
Slide four, it talks about some of the steps that we are taking this year to address our budget gap, some of the things that we have done. We did have some revenue revisions as we went through the budget. We do have the increased power revenue transfer. We had the SPERF, a parking revenue transfer, $10 million. We do have a small reserve fund transfer. And then we also have $53 million. That was the expectation from the P-3, which will be coming back, I believe, in the next week or two. I'll give you an update on that. We did have close to $100 million in reductions with departments, and we had furloughs. We made some capital improvement deferrals and other miscellaneous reductions of $50 million. This slide illustrates how we solved close to a half a billion-dollar budget gap for this year.
And Ray, why don't you comment on the fact that over the last two years, we've solved how much of a budget gap?
If you look at the two years, it's close to a billion dollar we've been addressing, yes. Certainly, the, going to the next slide, it talks about the P-3, and sort of this is where we are. And as I mentioned a little bit earlier, we are going to be coming back, hopefully in the next week and a half, with some information and an update as far as the P-3, the concession and where we are. If we do go forward, certainly, we're looking at some bids by the end of March. But I do want to say that if it is your desire to go forward with the P-3, most likely because of the transaction time, now that there's been some delays, most likely, if you were to proceed, we would not get any revenue until the following fiscal year. So, what we are discussing, and certainly what we're going to discuss a little bit more in just a bit, are the alternatives for balancing the current year budget. We have our current deficit that we had identified previously at $63 million, not assuming the P-3. And so, we had laid some options on the table. We had come back in December with operational plans that address part of that. And then we have some alternatives that your council adopted, a little over $18 million a couple of weeks ago. And then we have another, actually 16 now on the table for today. But not part of that 63 is revenue.
Can I just ask you, Ray, one thing before we go beyond? On your comments about the potential access to P-3 if it's approved, if it doesn't come until next fiscal year, and again, it's still up and up, up in the air as whether it's going to be approved, and the alternative that you're relating to us today is really the primary plan?
Exactly. I think originally, the CAO had mentioned that the P-3 back last fall was sort of our Plan A. And so, we've, as we have come forward with alternatives, that was originally the Plan B. But though, that has essentially flipped or flopped in that we need to move forward in addressing the P-3 revenue that we had anticipated in the budget.
And currently, from looking at the $53 million on the report before us today, it's roughly $30 million we still have to find?
That is...
And before you go to the next step?
Before we get to the revenue, that is correct.
Okay.
And so, with that, we turn to slide six. This slide actually shows where we are through December with our major revenue sources. Now, this shows us being down roughly about $8 million, but this is only for the first six months of the year. And we've noticed some, some trends where we're not seeing growth in some of our major revenue sources. And I'd like to call out our utility users tax. If you recall, it's made of three components, electric, gas, and telephoned. The electric users tax is where we're seeing some troubling news, some data. We are looking probably through the end of the year, being down close to $10 million in this particular revenue source. I think we had anticipated power sales growing in the neighborhood of over 7%. Unfortunately, we're about half of that. We're only seeing about half of that. The biggest driver of why we are down is basically consumption. As you look at, we had a mild summer, and so, our consumption over the, the summer months and into the fall was down, and it's certainly been a major factor as we look at that particular revenue source. Where we're also seeing some downward trend is in our telephone. We had already anticipated basically flat or a little bit of minus growth, about 1% for the budget. Unfortunately, we're seeing in the neighborhood of close to 3% negative growth, which translate to about $5 or $6 million for the fiscal year. This is simply a, a, a factor of that landline. Traditionally, people have had their landline phones and so forth, and we've seen a drop in landlines. We were hoping that cell phones would basically offset that, but unfortunately, over the last couple of years, we have not seen that growth in the cell phones. And so, overall, we're seeing a reduction in that, in the telephone users tax.
And Ray, on sales tax, when will we see if any impact on the year-end sales?
As far as the calendar year, this is the, the fourth quarter sales, Christmas sales. We will not get that information until late March. Once we get that dated, then we'll have a little bit better sense of where we are with sales tax. I did want to also bring to attention on our real estate transfer taxes, our documentary transfer tax. We had assumed some growth in the real estate market, and we are not seeing that growth whatsoever. Basically, I'm sorry, I don't have to tell you. If you look at the paper, basically, prices are still relatively flat, and certainly our turnover, meaning our inventory, is flat as well. And so, we look to be down in that revenue source in the range of $5 to $10 million for the current year.
Ray, on that particular tax, did we get a bump at the beginning of the fiscal year from, unexpectedly, from last fiscal year that we started the year with?
I believe you're referring to the property tax, and that we did. And so, we are up in the range of about $4 million in property tax. But our, in our documentary, unfortunately, we're not seeing the growth that we had anticipated when we put the budget...
Could you just give a brief explanation of what documentary tax are?
I'm sorry?
Could you just give a brief explanation of what the documentary tax covers?
It's basically the, our tax on real estate transfers. This is as, as people sell a particular property, then there's a tax that's attached to that transaction. And as I mentioned, because the actual number of deeds, the number of transactions are actually flat, as long, and as well as prices, we're not seeing any growth in that particular revenue source. We are concerned somewhat with our license permit fees and fines. This is what we refer to our departmental receipts. There are some areas that we are concerned. A number of those have to do with reimbursements from special funds. A lot of that is a factor of the change in the cap rate, which has reduced the rates, and the reimbursements from some of those special funds are down somewhat. Now, the one area that I would like to point out that is a bright spot for us, this is our hotel, our TOT tax. We had a budget of roughly about 3.5% growth, and then actually through December, we're seeing close to 7%. This is certainly good news, and so, we anticipate getting about $7, $8 million with this revenue source this year, which will help offset some of the, the other shortfalls. Most of this is not necessarily travel or leisure travel, but we feel a lot of this has to do with actually business, and this is certainly an encouraging sign for us. So, overall, when it comes to the revenue picture, we're looking at, at what I'll say, the high end or the low range of a minus, of a minus $20 million in revenue with a potential to be down $40 million.
And so, as we get into the other report, that potential 20 is now added to the 30 that we're fully aware of?
That is correct. So, and with that, if we just flip to the next slide, because this speaks to our reserve fund, where we, we're roughly about $180 million right now. Our emergency reserve is $120. The net effect of those are roughly $60 million. So, if you take our $30 million that we still have on the table, add $20 million at the low end to, to revenue, which is 50, you're pretty much wiping out most of the contingency reserve if we do nothing else at this point for the fiscal year.
Okay. And then if, if that were to occur, how would that impact us on beginning the fiscal year with just the emergency reserve and having to go out for a tran?
Obviously, we would be in a much weaker position as we go out to the market. The, one of the, the selling points for the city is the ability to, to, we've been increasing the reserve fund balance over the years, as you can see in slide seven. And we have been trying to do, take actions and try and position ourselves to bolster that reserve fund with the goal of getting to 5%. The rating agencies and our investors like to see us to, to budget adequate reserves because it shows that we are willing to, you know, if we go to the market, that we are willing to make the financial decisions that are necessary, and we are willing to save money for those contingencies. Certainly, I think we had some discussion last night a little bit regarding the, the bond market, the muni bond market. I think as, roughly over the last month or so, four or five weeks, we've seen the market as, as an exodus of roughly about $20 billion in outward flows of the muni funds. And this is, as, there's been a number of chatter and discussion in the, with the muni market, with, with local and state governments. The investors are very nervous about what's, what's going to happen with, with state and local government. And so, rates for municipal borrowing has increased a number of basis points, 50 to 100 basis points, depending on your credit, over the last several weeks.
Can you remind us what was the outcome of our tran last year?
We borrowed, you know, over 1.1 billion. We did have a little bit of difficulty selling the, the last transe, and our underwriter actually came in and purchased a little over $250 million of that. And fortunately, we, we did have an underwriter that had enough capital in order to purchase that. What is very important as we go forward with the tran is we want to maintain our AA rating. If we were to be dropped, downrated to an A, that many of the mutual funds are precluded from buying single A rated bonds. And so, with that, we would have a, a very large challenge to try to go back out to the market and sell 1.1 or 1.2 billion dollars next year for, for the 2011, '12 budget. So, I can't emphasize enough how important it is for us to maintain our reserve and maintain our AA rating.
Okay.
Going to the next slide, slide eight is, is our budget outlook. I think the, the note here is certainly our cost drivers. Just, you look at our pensions, both civilian and fire police, those are our major cost drivers. Certainly, health is a, a factor in our out years. As you can see, for 11, '12, we have a $350 million shortfall, and that continues to grow in the out years absent actions to bring our revenues in line with our expenditures.
Colleagues, on page eight, I would just hope that you'd look at that center box that Ray just commented on, on the incremental costs, not only for this year, but in the future, on the cost of the pension and workers' comp and medical and health plans, dental plans, what they will impact the city's budget. July of this year, when we go out to the tran, we will have a $900 million liability for just pension and health plans for this coming fiscal year. That's almost a fourth of the general fund.
That is correct.
And this will continue to grow as years come up?
That is correct. As part of our deficit, the $350 million for 11, '12, if you were to look at the civilian and fire and police pensions, take those two numbers together, it's roughly $170 million of your 350. And certainly, with the out years, it continues to grow. Moving to slide nine provides, there's a couple different things. I think if you look at the bottom left and the top right, these are a reflection of our estimated contributions for both our pensions and lasers, but also illustrate in the bottom left corner, our expenditure drivers. And in this, going back is to our health, retirement costs, workers' comp, and those things. And those are really what's driving our, our deficits. As we go forward in the top left, that's just sort of a, it gives you an illustration in the pie chart form as far as what the outlook looks like and where we're seeing our cost increases, you between, you know, colas, pensions, et cetera. And the chart on the lower right gives you just an indication of the trends that we've seen in healthcare, in our healthcare costs over the last 10 years. Lastly, on slide 10, I think it's important for us to, to stay the course. As we look at our financial policy, we need to make sure that we adhere to them, update them, and continue to strengthen them to, to put us in a good financial spot. We are looking, certainly as we move forward, we're going to have to have a renewed focus on our core services and what we are going to do as we go forward. We are looking at options on other public-private partnerships. We've discussed sort of the convention center and the zoo. We're looking at those proposals and see what, what, what are the options and what options would be best for the city. And certainly, a big part of our driver is our, our pensions and salaries. And with that, we have this concept of a sustainable workforce. And with that, we have this sworn pension reform, and so, we do have that measure on our March ballot, and it'll be very important for the city to reduce future costs as hopefully as that will be approved by the voters. And we do have a number of proposals that we are trying to, to hone down and bring one to council for civilian in the next month or so. There likewise, we have, we are looking at healthcare, and we have been able to move with our labor partners to, to achieve some savings with healthcare. But certainly, we have more to go as we look into the out years. So, that concludes the presentation. As we go forward with, I believe you have three other community meetings, and we will share this with the constituents that show up at those, and we'll be happy to have this presentation for those as well as we go forward.
Now, could you dovetail into the, report this on the agenda and talk about how, what is... being proposed today as we try to cut the 60 million down to 30 million?
Sure, exactly. So back on the January 14th, we brought the original proposal to you. Council had a number of concerns. You adopted 18, 18.3, which was actually a slightly increased 18.4. But you also asked us to go back and where we had recommended some furloughs at that time, you asked us to go back and work with the departments, both to identify the service impacts, just in case you wanted to adopt the 10 additional furlough days, but also to come forward with some permanent or structural reduction options in lieu of those furloughs. And so what we discussed in BNF a week ago yesterday were just some of those options. In committee, we discussed, I think we had about $12 million, but your direction to us in committee was to work with selected departments, you know, planning, animal services, personnel, et cetera. And what we distributed today was a revised attachment to, which totaled 16.1. So with that, it brings down our original deficit of 32 that was remaining down to 28. So with the additional help from departments, we are slowly moving in the right direction. So what I guess in a bottom line is with your approval of these today, we would end up with a minimum of $28 million remaining gap, assuming the P3 doesn't come through. And then we're going to have to find other solutions to address the revenue piece of 20 to 40 million.
And then on the issues that are on the list today, are these primarily on attachment to, are these primarily one-time savings or they're structural or are they a percentage?
Right now, of the 16, there's over $3 million that can be viewed as ongoing and in the remaining 12 is one-time.
Could you go with that again?
So ongoing meaning structural is roughly 3.2 million with the remaining part of the 16 being one-time and that's $12 million.
All right, so the issue is that the one-times helped us this year, but starting next fiscal year, it's going to be even larger cuts?
That is correct.
Okay. And then also, could you explain to the council the items that were taken off the report that there was concerns about that we'll have to reconsider as we come back to the mid-year report?
Sure, there were a number of items that were held in your committee. These, if you go to, basically a recommendation of our original report, which was a recommendation to move forward on a minimum of five furlough days, that was held in committee and we requested that to be held until we can come back with you on an update on where P3 is. We also held in committee the reduction in the cleaning green, the potential reductions to Wrenken Parks of 2.8 million. The SPRF items were also held. And then you removed two items, which was the 10 furlough days for GSD police officers and 10 furlough days for fire special duty positions.
Okay. And on the report, attachment to, those items, you've had a conference with the general managers and they have agreed that this is their give at this time?
Reluctantly, yes, they have agreed.
All right, so they've agreed to those. Colleagues, again, this is about 16 million. Last time was 18. Our movement as we move towards March, I believe will be the next financial status report, we're going to have to find the remaining 28 plus whatever our deficits are in our issues dealing with our revenue. And if departments do not meet their guidelines as it relates to their cuts, that will add even more to the deficit. So based on what we know today from the two reports, that deficit could go as high as close to $50 million as of today. If the revenues fall even more, it could grow. And with the thought that the P3 will not be available during this fiscal year, this alternative now is the primary source to basically balance the budget. One of the important items in the book is looking at the reserve fund. We can ill afford to get to this, end of this fiscal year and have a reserve fund of 120 some odd million dollars that just covers emergencies with a pending $300 million shortfall. So these are the things we're going to have to deal with between now and June. And understanding everything that we do during this fiscal year, their structure, will help us next year. And so the key will continue to go around as to whether the options are furloughs, whether the options are layoffs. With 90 some percent of our budget personnel and the cost that's centered around personnel, it's almost impossible not to address personnel items as we go forward. So we'd ask that this report, the committee report be approved with the updated attachments.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Coetz is our next speaker.
Yeah, just a couple of things from last night's committee meeting. One member of the public testified that there are ideas out there in terms of the ability to move some of our revenue around and its timing. Now, I don't know if that's a realistic possibility, but that would reduce the historic need for, you know, a giant gap loan that we always have of a billion dollars or so. Is there a way, short-term or long-term, to try and change the timing of some of our revenue so that it's more workable for the city?
Yes, we have looked at that. We have had some discussions with the public on that because that question has come up. For us to basically move forward revenue, essentially we're talking perhaps of changing our fiscal year. Instead of being from July to June, it would be on a calendar year. There's a number of issues with that, of which, you know, charter would be one of those. I think there's a perception that perhaps the business tax can actually be used, can be brought forward, which can be used to help offset some of the cash flow. But unfortunately, the business tax already is something that's prepaid. So people are paying now for this calendar year. So we would not have the ability to push, pull that up forward any more than what we're doing now. And I know through prior conversations, we've had that with the public on, because that was part of what they had proposed.
Well, other than trying to use it as a short-term fix, which it obviously isn't, especially if it requires a charter change, is there any reason why with a longer-term eye towards this change, that we couldn't possibly change our fiscal year to match the calendar year if it indeed reduced this kind of need for, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars in transfer?
If we were changed to a calendar year budget, we would still be faced with the same problem. And in fact, actually, I actually view it as it could even be more challenging or more of a risk because if you look at our property tax, which is our biggest revenue source, you get a payment, you get some big payments in April and May, but then the second payment would come in December 20th. And so if we were on a calendar year, if there's any risk to that December payment being late, then you're going to run into a cash flow problem. And so by keeping it on the fiscal year pattern that we are now, we basically get our first payment December 20th and then we get our second payment in April 20th and then we get another follow-up in May. And so we would further put ourselves at, I see it as a risk by changing to a calendar year.
What about the first idea, trying to change the timing of some taxes like the business tax? Again, we obviously couldn't do it short-term for now, payments are already being made, but...
Well, as I mentioned, the business tax now, I mean, it doesn't make a difference whether it's short-term or long-term because we ask businesses to essentially prepay, we're already collecting for calendar year 2011 and they're paying those amounts now. So we couldn't pull those up any farther.
Is there a way to back them up for a temporary period of time so that we're on the right schedule and then keep it there from?
We could, what it would mean for us, we would have to identify a whole, you know, in whatever year we made a change, we'd have to identify $400 million to plug in a fiscal year. So we're kind of in a tight spot.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Han, followed by Mr. LaBonge.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I was just kind of looking at our two options, either the impact of the 10 additional furlough days or this other plan that would save us 16 million. And I will say, I was never a big fan of adding 10 more additional furlough days to the already 26. I really felt that our public would be extremely short-changed by that scenario. I mean, I hate looking even in animal services. I mean, just 10 extra days will result in additional animals being killed, euthanized. The other thing about this, the 19 furlough days, there was a lot of lost revenue associated with the furlough days. And I was wondering on this other plan, alternative plan, is there, I didn't see it, but besides the saving, are we seeing additional loss of revenue if we went with this plan and where would that be?
As far as the additional 16 that we have on the table for today, we have been looking at these and asking that question, whether or not we're going to be hurting revenue. And we do believe that with the items on this table, that would not affect our revenue. Now, you mentioned the furloughs, obviously at some point we come back later, then we'll need to have that discussion and look at that.
All right, well, that's encouraging. Yeah, just looking at the furlough plan, it's, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in animal services we would lose, under parking, $385,000 in lost revenue, 2.4 million in lost revenue with furloughs and street maintenance and cleaning. So yeah, that's, I mean, we look at the savings on that, but the lost revenue also hits us at another spot, which we don't really need to be hit right now. So I appreciate the Budget and Finance Committee coming up with, I think, a better alternative. Saves the 16 million, doesn't look like there's more loss in our anticipated revenue and I think it's a better plan, particularly for our public. It doesn't cut some of those services as dramatically as the furlough plan does. So thank you. I will support it.
Mr. LaBonge.
Mr. CAO, good to see you. I remember I asked this question before, on issues of furlough, if I worked at Lockheed or Douglas and they lost a contract or at certain times of the year, they shut down their plants, I should say it that way, between a period of time. I think we place a burden on the public and a burden on our employees often when there's odd schedules. Is there a way to look at, if there has to be furloughs, that for those jobs that are not a daily job necessity, that between December 20th and January 5th, that those days be furlough days and then between a wraparound days of holiday, which sometimes does stimulate economic development for the community, could they be wraparound days because there's odd schedules? They said they couldn't do that. But I want you to look at it again, members, I think it is very important to look at those furlough days in a way that we best serve the public, but at the same time, do what other industries do to shut down at those times, other than the daily industries, the daily civic enterprises of sanitation, public works and also our police and fire. In addition to that, how many positions in the city are exempt, like exempt positions?
You know, I'd have to get back to you.
But we took a ballot issue and I think, I don't know if Jerry Miller knows or Sharon knows, there's about 300 or 400 positions that are exempt. Okay.
I don't have the exact number, but it's the special funded departments.
No speaker for the clerk. For the, excuse me, Madam Clerk, no speaker for Madam CLA.
We don't have the exact number, but the positions that are exempt from furlough are those that are special funded generally.
Okay, but if I'm civil service exempt and I'm a manager of a department, do I take a furlough day? Why would you have to take a furlough day if you're exempt? Because I think the city's losing man and woman power and staffing for exempt positions. I find that a little shocking because they're exempt already. They're living on an exempt basis because they're paying a higher salary.
They may, some, maybe you can answer.
I think the city administrators, you should look at that and report back on that. And I think we should ask ourselves, members, that means there's a number of people in departments who took the opportunity to jump up in a high management role and also they had the benefit of that salary, but at the same time, it may have been reduced in the furlough, but they're exempt and should they be taking time off?
The purpose, if the purpose is to save money, then taking the furlough accomplishes that, whether they're exempt from civil service or not?
Well, I think you should look at that issue there because I think that's one of the reasons why the voters approved having managers who are exempt from civil service to be able to serve in a way that gives them the ability to do that. Now, additionally, I wanted to ask this question as Ms. Han spoke up on the street cleaning and that. I want to make sure we're not having tickets issued to people while we're not cleaning the streets. That's the key that I want you to look at. And also, members, I want you to look at an amendment to this item 14. I think if you're in a business and you're not collecting your collections, you go to your attorney's and you say, "Get them collected." And this is an amendment that calls for the city attorney's office to take over collections. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaBonge, Mr. Weisar, followed by Mr. Parks. Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify some of the service impacts from the items on attachment to. For the fire, the various account adjustments, 1.7. Again, what would that impact if anything? Anybody?
I'm sorry?
In attachment to, you're asking the impact for fire?
Yes, various account adjustments, 1.7 million. That's general services. That's, that's right, that's general service. I'm sorry, general services. What's the, what's the impact on that? Various account adjustments. So that's just cleaning up accounts, $100,000 here, $25,000 there, no real impact to any services, correct?
No, their reduction would mean a reduction in the natural gas accounts, operating supplies, postage and some from their revolving fund, so.
Got it. And neighborhood empowerment, $12,000 reduction to translation services. How does that impact our constituents' ability to have translation services, if any?
It reduces the contractual dollars available for translation services.
So on a real practicality basis, what does that mean? That one neighborhood council will not have translation services or less hours?
I mean, I think the department's prepared a suit to talk about the service impacts of that cut, but this is what they were proposing. This came from the department.
There's someone here who could answer that, I think.
Jeff Pearl, Neighborhood Empowerment. The translation services and the contractual services accounts for the department's ability to translate has nothing to do with the neighborhood councils.
Okay, so what impact would this have?
None.
No, no, okay, great, good. And finally, the, on public works, the reduction of equipment leasing and contract trucks, that, we're implementing that to coincide with cuts we've already made, correct? That's 2.4 million dollars?
Yes, according to the department, this is to coincide with the number of miles that have been reduced. So that reduces the amount of equipment they need to lease to meet those resurfacing miles.
And service cuts, what does this mean for service cuts? What can we expect, if any, that we get calls from constituents to say, "Well, there's less trucks out there, we're going to have less trees trimmed," those street services, correct? So does it, have we equated that in any way? Have we been able to translate that?
Well, I think previously the department had stated that they were originally funded to complete 235 miles of street resurfacing for this fiscal year and based on their budget, based on their staff availability, that they were not going to be able to meet that amount, that their amount was going to be closer to the 180 miles of street resurfacing. So then this reduction is to coincide with the reduced number of miles.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Parks.
President. Colleagues, what I'd recommend on 14-8 to go to committee, we have no less than 15 different motions that's working through under the umbrella of the Macias report about report about collection. One of the first things that came out dealt with the paramedic costs that we implemented, and then we have the collection sheriff that they're looking to hire, and we're going through a variety of other things of adding secondary and primary collection agencies. And so I think this should go to committee so it could be evaluated along with the other 15 motions about debt collection. The one thing I think we need to be aware of on this particular report, although it's $16 million added to the previous 18, colleagues, just be prepared before the next month or so, this is going to be chicken feed compared to what we're going to have to deal with to get out of the fiscal year and put us in a position to get ready for next fiscal year. What the CAO is going to try to do, as they look at the review of budgets for the next year, the items that are substantial, they're probably going to try to roll them into the mid-year so that we can get a partial year saving for this year and also a full year saving for next year. We just cannot start the fiscal year with a minimum reserve fund and have a $300 million shortfall, or have a drop in our rating, and also not get our trans. So all these things are connected, and certainly, as you know from the newspaper articles, they, the banking industry watches every move we make, and although they are appreciative of our public statements, they look even closer as to our public actions. And so I'd ask that we move this, send 14-8 to committee, and that we be prepared over the next month or so as these reports come in. And if your staffs that monitor the budget for you, one of the most important issues over the next several months is how our revenues are coming in. And if revenues are slowing beyond that 20 million rate that they're talking today, just remember, last year, we were 100-plus million dollars short within the first six months. And so this is where the projections, and the only thing that keeps us stable at this time is we have a very viable number of revenue sources, and hopefully, they do not all redline at the same time. And so the issue is, the 30 million that we're talking about in this report that's before you that we're going to vote on, has already grown to 50 million based on the information we received yesterday. And if revenues continue, or if people do not, general managers do not stay within their budget, that number just keeps growing. And eventually, we'll run out of places to fix people's budgets if general managers don't do their job. And so we hope not ever to get to the point that a department budget can't pay its employees. But again, the council has put forth a budget, and what we hope, and people staying within those budgets, they cannot budget on an interim basis by choosing not to follow it, because all it does is cut something that you may think is important that was placed in the budget. So I'd ask for an "I" vote, and that we move forward and move 14-8 to committee.
And our final speaker?
I asked Mr. Parks if he could consider that within 30 days, because I think it's a valued idea, and come back on the city attorney.
Within 30 days.
30 days. Today's the 1st of February, how about, yeah, the 2nd, 3rd, 3rd of March.
30 of the year.
Okay?
Yeah, 30.
Because I think it's an idea.
That's our motion, Mr. Parks.
It's a friendly amendment accepted by a friendly.
Friendly amendment, okay. Thank you very much.
You just want to comment on the year, Tom.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you. The question regarding general managers, and we mentioned furloughs, general managers are salary. So if they're salary, unless they take a pay cut, their furlough day, they're still getting the same salary. So how do we have general managers who are on salary take a furlough day unless, I mean, whether they work 12 hours or 8 hours or whatever, they're salaried employees, not hourly employees. So when we talk about them taking a furlough day, understanding the process, they're basically getting a day, and they're still getting paid for it, unlike the hourly employees who are getting docked. How are we docking general managers if they're doing furlough days? How does that work on a salaried employee? As we know, general managers may work weekends, et cetera, like council members, salaried employees. How does that work?
So GMs are salaried employees, and they are taking, they're getting the reduction on their paycheck. Many of them are here, you know, 5 days, 6 days a week, if not more. We have to go back and find out whether all of them, but certainly, I know Miguel, myself, we're here a lot.
No, I'm not disputing that. I'm not disputing that, because when you're a salaried employee, if you're working 7 days, or 6 days, or whatever the case may be, you're getting that salary. The same thing with council members. We don't have to work 8 hours, or 10 hours, or 12 hours. We're salaried employees, and if we work 7 days a week, 12 hours, whatever the case may be, that's what we do. When we talk about general managers and salary and furloughs, how are we deducting their pay if they're salaried employees? Is that actually being done?
You're basically reducing their compensated, you're reducing their compensated hours are being reduced.
Are we doing that? But see, they don't get paid by the hour. They're not paid by it. They're paid as a general manager for that position.
But the way.
Basically, what general managers have done is basically reduce their number of hours that they're compensated. So most general managers, while they work more than 5, 40 hours a week.
Right.
They have reduced their compensation level to be only compensated for 36 hours a week, or 72 hours a week.
So we're doing that to all general managers?
Whatever general managers, I believe all general managers right now are on a reduced compensation.
Okay, I'd like to have that
Yes.
Report back to verify that's actually being done, because I know the hourly employees are getting those furlough days. And then the other issue is the city attorney, the deficit in the city attorney's office. I know that they're looking for $4 million from the city attorney's office, the deficit in the city attorney's office, and the core functions from the city attorney's office, and how it relates to public safety. For example, the police officer arrests someone. If the city attorney doesn't file a criminal charge, that person then walks. Is that a core function, a responsibility, that we have to give the city attorney the assets to do their job, and that meaning personnel? Have we looked into that?
We're looking at all of the options, and in fact, as we're working with the mayor's office to identify potential areas of reduction for next year.
I'm talking about rest of this fiscal year, because I understand from the numbers, they're looking at $4 million from the city attorney.
That is correct. But as we go through and look, do our analysis, we are trying to keep in mind what it does, you know, where we are for next year. And as we, it goes back to what I mentioned earlier, that we need to look at our core services and where we're going to put our general fund dollars.
So what happens to the city attorney's office? Can I have Mr. Carter come forward and explain how it's impacted them? Because look at the numbers, it shows a million was taken, and we're looking for $3 million additional dollars. And how does that affect them in core services, working with the police department, the civil and the criminal? Mr. Carter.
Good afternoon, Madam President, council members, Councilman Zine. The question before the council today, I think, is the $3 million that the CAO has identified, that the city attorney should be responsible for on the P3. The $3 million, the city attorney started the fiscal year out with about a $10 million deficit. Since July 1st of 10, we have been working our deficit down. We anticipate we're probably about $3 to $4 million right now in deficit. We hope to balance the budget by June 30th of this year. The $3 million that's, the discussion today is being, the CAO wants to tack that on top of that. That's an additional $3 million that is coming from the P3. So as the city attorney is trying to manage its current budget, they have, the CAO and others came up with this extra $3 million because of P3. The question we have is, where did the $3 million come from?
Well, can we find that out?
We don't know. We were at, we were told, this is what we were told, that they did a back calculation. They figured what 10 furlough days would mean, 10 additional furlough days. My prosecutors and litigators are already subject to 26 days of furlough. It's almost impossible to run a prosecution office when your prosecutors are furloughed, the judges aren't furloughed, the juries aren't furloughed, the police aren't furloughed, the criminals certainly aren't furloughed, but I have to furlough prosecutors. So we asked them, "How did you come up with the $3 million?" They said, "Well, if we give you another 10 furlough days, that equals $3 million." That doesn't answer the question, "How did you come up with $3 million?" Then you saw, on January 21st of this year, the CAO issued another memo, and then they calculated, "Well, maybe we should give you 5 furlough days." If you take their reasoning, then it's not $3 million anymore, it's half, it's 1.5. I don't understand where they get their numbers, and you, as council people, should ask them, "Where do they get their numbers?" Because they also hit us for another $1 million. They didn't want 3, they wanted 4.
Right.
On January 14th of this year, the council voted to take another $1 million from the city attorney. We paid it. We made enough savings in outside council that we paid that $1 million. Now, the other way that we have to deal with additional threats of reductions, we have to close criminal prosecutions. And what we did, after the council acted on January 14th, we consolidated our filing. We pulled our criminal filers out of the branches, moved them downtown. Our saving $1 million probably cost LAPD $3 million, because now their officers have to travel downtown. Because if we are not there to file the cases, the criminals get released. The police can only hold them 48 hours. The other impact is, I have to close prosecutors out of the branches and put them into the civil side. We've identified at least 7, possibly 8, additional special funded positions, which will take at least 7 attorneys off of our books and into special funded, which will save an additional $6,000 to $700,000. We're currently working with the CAO on that. Problem we have is, we don't get answers from the CAO that makes sense to us. Perhaps you can ask those questions.
Well, if we could have answers to those questions, and I'd also like, in my motion 14, that the city attorney report on the functions of their office, which have a direct connection to public safety and which are essential to the core function of the police department, because there's a nexus between the police department, which we talk about public safety, and the city attorney's office. Ray, can you answer the question for Mr. Carter?
And I wanted, I was, we wanted to apologize. The city attorney was in fact here.
Yes, he was.
The city attorney was here for at least an hour. He was prepared to be here, but he had to attend an event with the police chief and the United States attorney this morning. Our office participated in a gang takedown. We're 50 of 58 targets for the 38th Street gangs were taken down. Our office participated because our office is taking enforcement action against the homes and the buildings in which these gangs use as headquarters. That's what we do as a city attorney's office. Hopefully, that won't be overlooked. If we, if we continue to get reductions, we will not be able to serve that function.
And let me comment on that. I worked my reserve assignment this morning at 2:00 AM with that task force, and there were probably 400, 500 personnel from federal, state, local on that detail, taking those folks down. I know the city attorney's office, when I spoke to representatives, were immediately going into court to seize those properties that were gang-infested areas. Ray, can you answer the question regarding the numbers?
Yeah, so let me be very clear. So the department started off the year with a $10 million shortfall. They have taken actions that have to reduce that to $4 million, and we discussed this back in December. And at that time, the council said, "Okay, we understand we're going to take the, your reductions, it gets you down to 4, but you still have $4 million that year. We're going to have to give them, because they've been unable to implement their budget." So as we move forward, and we're looking at the P3 and where we are, there were 2 pieces. One, we asked them, "Okay, you have a $4 million remaining budget gap. Please come up with $1 million of that," and then you would end up the remaining 3. The second piece is the 20 furlough days that were going to be spread among all general fund employees for the remainder of the year, I'm sorry, the 10, sorry, thank you. And that amounted to roughly about $20 million for all departments. Of the $20 million, slightly over $3 million would be attributed or allocated to the city attorney. So the $3 million is still actually on the table, though it's not really for discussion for today, because the furloughs have been set aside until we come back with the P3 discussion. So the $1 million that we asked them to come up with, they did. And thank you very much, they did bring in $1 million and reduce outside council costs. I think an issue for next week, as we discuss where we are with the P3, and if we do not receive that revenue, then we're going to have to sit back down and decide what we're going to do and how we're going to address remaining shortfalls.
So, P3.
You're over, Mr. Zine, so wrap it up, please.
Okay, so P3, that we keep on talking about, the $53 million for the parking lots, we still haven't had one RFP out on that?
That, we were going to come back next week with an update. That's enough for discussion today. I see the, the city attorney.
We'll kick that bucket for another week. Well, we highly respect your position, and also, Mr. Carter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. LaBonge is our next speaker.
I saw where the governor did a list of things for state workers, employees. Have we stopped any purchasing of vehicles at this time?
I think that's a question we need to bring GSD, but as part of their reduction, they are reducing the fleet. We made some reductions last year, and they are making some more this year.
Right.
You referring to vehicles and things like that?
I think we should look at just some of those things that we should know, some of the basic things that you do when you're, look like you're not going to make it to the end of the year. What could you use? Because I know, they used to have, I think in, in every June, you put a clamp on, even in good times, on general managers to not just spend money because it's in their budget. You looking at that sooner than later?
Yes, we will.
Right.
One other thing I just wanted to address, as part of the file that you have, is recommendation number 4. That is for the CAO and the CLA to report back, actually, on how a more standardized citywide closure, if we were to move down the path of furloughs, that's something that we will be reporting back.
Yeah, do you look at that, where you could do that? And the LA Unified pays their teachers over a 12-month period, so they don't see it as difficult as it is. They don't see it like if they're out for multiple days, but it's spread all over the course of time. And also, I want you to look at this, it wasn't just the general managers. I know the voters voted, and I believe it's 318 positions that were relieved of civil service protection that are exempt positions. So it's not just the general managers, but that team, that under Mr. Ridd's administration, they wanted to try to have this new paradigm of looking at the management of departments, to make sure that they're special fund departments and there's no furlough. That's correct, right? Sanitation, no furlough. But some of these other departments, if there are managers in it, I think we should look at it as administrators, and to report back to us as the council, you know, if those people are in that situation, should they be working here? Because they, excuse me, should they be working at those times? And I appreciate what everybody does all the time. This is a very difficult time, so we have to look at it as managers, the best way to move forward. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Mr. LaBonge. Mr. Coretts is our next speaker.
Just one point as a follow-up on Mr. LaBonge's motion on turning collections over to the city attorney. When we get a report back from Budget and Finance, if we could also ask for a report back on a somewhat conflicting direction that we're headed in with the creation of an inspector general to oversee the collections process. So as we sort of jerk from one thing to another, that we're looking at to improve collections, I don't want to lose track of that idea as well, because I'm assuming we do one or the other, but probably not both.
All right, no, no, okay, that's fine. Mr. Parks, you're our final speaker. Mr. Parks?
To close. He was harassing me. No, colleagues, I would just like to make a couple of comments. I think one of the things, again, in dealing with this issue today, these are very tame in the sense of the things that we're recommending, but I think we have to be aware of one thing that's very specific. Any pitch made to save my department, you cut somewhere else. I mean, it's just that graphic. If you reduce the reserve fund, then you are in jeopardy of losing your rating, and you can't get through next fiscal year. Every general manager sounds like Mr. Carter. Do not cut my department because I'm public safety, I'm doing something that's beneficial to the city. Every one of them is beneficial because they're still on the budget. The issue is, there's not enough money to do all the things we've been doing. The police department during this year's found $20 million in their budget, and they're still 9 short, and we're trying to assist them on that. The fire department found double-digit million. The fire department found double-digit millions and still have double-digit millions to go. So there's no department that's been immune to this. So some of this sounds ticky-tacky, a department giving twelve million, twelve thousand here, fifteen thousand, but that's all they have to give. Eventually, several of those fifteen thousand actually counts up to some real money. And so, again, as we look at this, and I'd hope that in each pitch that we get about save my department, we ask, what do we cut to save your department? And you may not like the results of that comment, because most of the comments come in with no consideration of what gets cut, the mere conversation is just save me. And I think as a council, we have to look at the larger picture and look at the larger budget and figure out what the priorities are. And if departments choose not to follow the budget, this city attorney's office would not be in the bind they're in today had they implemented their budget July first. Being that they didn't, that's why we're six months into it with a four million dollar shortfall. So to be here today and say, don't cause me to cut anymore, people in general managers' positions have to follow the budget. It is not advisory, it's not something you say I follow when I choose to, it's what the council approved. Unfortunately, the Budget Finance Committee had to send a letter out to every general manager recently saying, the budget is the budget, follow it, because several departments July first refused to follow their budget. And that's why the over expenditures in the first six months. So I would hope as you hear these pitches, you realize if there's not a second story, a second part to it of what do you impact by saving this position, then that's not a true reflection of what we should be doing. So I would hope that all of these recommendations that we'll be bringing them to you from the Budget Committee, the financial report, that I tell you, if this, these recommendations today cause concern, I tell you what's coming up is going to be very significantly different, and there are no other options. There is no reserve fund, there's no one to fix it for you, there's no departments, city attorney, C A O, the C L A., there's no money in their bottom drawer, there's no windfall coming, it is, this is where the rubber meets the road. And so I'd hope that we can take the sixteen million, move forward on it, and then get prepared to whether, and hope that, keep our fingers crossed, that that growing deficit for this fiscal year doesn't get to fifty, to sixty, to seventy, with a three fifty for next year already. And so that's the thing I think we have to deal with, and that's, it's really, we run out of options. And so when we ask departments to cut their budget, they should cut their budget as we've asked, and not come in and say, well, it's grown to four million now, what should I do? It's something that which we expect general managers to be general managers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. All right, with that, Mr. Clerk, what is the action to be taken today?
Before council is the Budget and Finance Committee report as amended by fourteen B. that has the instruction for the city attorney to report back. And fourteen A. is being sent to the Budget and Finance Committee with an amendment to have a report back in thirty days.
Okay, why don't we just open the roll on that? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote? Twelve eyes. All right, next order of business?
Council has motions for posting and referred.
Motions are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused March twenty-ninth and thirtieth for personal business, that meets council policy.
Uh, Mr. Zine moves, Mr. Smith seconds.
Councilmember Weezer requests to be excused April twenty-ninth for city business, that also meets council policy.
That'll be without objection.
And that clears the desk.
All right, members, are there any amount, okay, Mr. Parks?
We want to approve it as amended.
Oh, sorry, all right, let's, let's open the roll on that again to make sure we're technically correct, to approve
With the revised attachment.
Approve the action.
Fourteen B.
Do we need to re-vote on that? It was approved as amended for the record.
Yes.
Let's open the roll again to approve the last item as amended by
Fourteen A. going to committee, fourteen B.
Yes, that was stated for the record, fourteen A. was being referred to Budget and Finance.
All right, so there is no need to vote again, is that correct?
Yeah.
Report back in thirty days.
Thirty days.
And also, there's a new attachment that was presented to that.
Yes, attachment two will be made behind the record.
All right, okay, great. All right, thank you for clearing that up, uh, members, any announcements, announcements?
February first, here from February.
Okay, thank you.
This was the warmest January in our history, this last month says, critical.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. All right, members, if you would please rise for adjourned motions. Anyone for adjourned motions, Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Madam President, colleagues, I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of Rollin Tank Nelson, who passed away last week at the age of seventy-eight. Tank was born November eleventh, nineteen thirty-two in San Pedro, and graduated from San Pedro High School in nineteen fifty-one. After high school, he joined the Navy and later married Nola Louise Ing, they had four children. Unfortunately, she passed away in a car accident, and in nineteen eighty-three, he remarried a woman named Terry Crow. After serving in the Navy, he spent forty-four years working on San Pedro's docks, but it was after he retired as a longshoreman that he discovered his niche as a movie reviewer. He started out going to see all these movies, and then people would ask him what he thought about a certain movie, thumbs up, thumbs down. And that evolved into, he actually had a place in San Pedro on Twenty-Second Street out of his apartment, that he would hang a little wooden shingle, and he would write the name of a movie on there that he recommended people go see. So if you're wondering what to do for the weekend, you would drive by his apartment, and you would see the movie that he recommended that you see. That actually evolved, and he was featured in the L A. Times, he appeared on the Today Show, as well as other shows. He was an expert in movie trivia, and he wrote columns about film shoots done in and around San Pedro. In addition to his wife, he survived by four daughters, Sally Johnson, Kelly Nelson, and Polly Nelson, all of Utah, and Peggy Nelson of Nevada, a brother, Harry, of San Pedro, ten grandchildren, and four great-grandchildren. He is not going to have a funeral, but he's requested that instead of sending flowers, please consider taking a loved one out to lunch.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Um, I have one more.
Oh, sorry.
I'd like us to adjourn in the memory of Sam Demansich, who was a San Pedro teacher, a local historian, passed away at the age of eighty. He was also a graduate of San Pedro High School in nineteen forty-six. He was drafted by the Army when he was twenty-one, he served in Korea, and when he returned home, he attended C S U. Long Beach, writing part-time for the sports section of the Long Beach Independent Press Telegram. He was a Los Angeles schoolteacher and counselor. Sam quietly steered youngsters into classes or sports that would keep them out of trouble. When he retired, he returned to writing newspaper columns and articles mainly about the San Pedro that he loved. Few writers knew San Pedro the way Sam did. He wrote and told stories about growing up in San Pedro during the Depression and World War Two. In two thousand and six, Demansich realized a longtime personal dream with the publication of his book titled Hit the Line, chronicling one hundred years of football at San Pedro High School. Sam is survived by his lovely wife Jackie, two sons, Michael and Daniel, a daughter, Susanna, a brother, Matty Demansich, and three grandchildren. The viewing will be Thursday, February third, at McNerney's in San Pedro, and then the funeral will be ten A M. this Friday at Holy Trinity Catholic Church. I knew Sam, he was a great guy, a great lover of all people, but particularly of San Pedro. We will miss Sam Demansich tremendously.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn, any other adjourned motions? Mr. Parks, did you have one?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Parks, then Mr. Rosengold.
Thank you, Madam Chair, we have three adjourned motions today. First, from a historical perspective, from the city of Los Angeles, we have a person, many of you, if you worked in the city before nineteen eighty-five, would have known the name John Blackhurst. He was an early and key employee in the C L A.'s office, passed away January twenty-seventh in Victorville, California, he was eighty-one. John served the C L A.'s office from nineteen sixty-three until his retirement in eighty-five. During his years, he was a consultant to the Finance Committee, and he was instrumental in establishing the process through which the council reviewed and adopts the annual city budget. John is survived by his wife Audrey and son. Funeral arrangements are pending. Those who wish to send condolences to the family, they can be reached at eighty-five fourteen, box S V L., Victorville, California. Also, we'd like to adjourn in memory of Delvin Rutledge. He was the director of the hit film Love Chronicle. He was a popular filmmaker and a hip-hop producer. He died in his sleep from unknown causes Thursday, Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, in his home in Inglewood at the age of forty-seven. Delvin was a former Marine, was most known for directing such movies as Love Connect Chronicle, and start, which starred Lisa Ray, Terrence Howard, and Robin Givens. He's a graduate of Darcy High in nineteen eighty-one, he went on to attend Los Angeles City College as a film major before transferring to Otis College of Art and Design. Delvin got a start in film participating in the Ebony Showcase Theater Film Program, Barnesdale Park Junior Art Center, and the Brock Peters Television Program. Delvin was also one of the founding members of the Ultra Wave Productions, remembered for their dance parties held at the Veterans Auditorium in Culver City during the eighties, and is credited for having to create L A.'s West Side Eighties trendy dance scene, now known as West Coast Hip-Hop. Most recently, Delvin was in production on an independent film, The Blue Witch Project. Two thousand and ten, at his mother's funeral, Delvin made it clear that he didn't want his homies in suits crying at his memorial. He told his daughter that he wanted the family and friends to have a party at the beach upon his death. Delvin's family and friends would gather Saturday, February fifth, at ten A M. to six P M. at Delway Lagoon Park, located on, in Westchester, for picnic and celebration life of Delvin Rutledge. At four thirty, they will caravan to Doc Wyler State Beach at the lifeguard station fifty-five and light a bonfire for a memorial. Flowers and cards can be sent to forty-two seven, forty, four twenty-seven, Tamarack Apartment Four in Inglewood, he survived by a host of family and friends. Okay? And the last one is, request council adjourn in memory of Fred Horn Jr. born March nineteen forty-four in St. Louis, where he resided until he is fourteen years of age. He later migrated by train to Los Angeles in nineteen fifty-eight. He attended Mount Vernon High School, Manuel R. Ty, Los Angeles, California. During high school, he played football, became an all-star player. He helped lead his team to a city championship during his graduating year. After high school, he went on to play semi-pro football, traveling throughout the country. Fred has been a devout Christian for over fifty-three years, he attended various churches, became a member of Glory Christian Fellowship International in two thousand and four. In nineteen sixty-three, Fred married Marion Stokes and gave birth to their only son, Charles, in nineteen sixty-three. During nineteen seventies, Fred was very active in the community and enthusiastically gave up his time to help intercity youth. He served as an activist to eliminate gang violence. He also was passionate when he opened the Malcolm X. Center, was also moved to establish the Long Table in nineteen seventy-two, an organization that encouraged bloods and crips to sit down at the table and talk about their differences. Unfortunately, his efforts were eventually thwarted, but he was unrelenting, and he established the Anti-Self Destruction Incorporated, which was dedicated to instill pride and uplift intercity children. Also, he's proudly worked as an assistant to Councilmember Robert Pharaoh in the city of L A. Outside in the community services, he had a great passion for boxing, he ultimately became a professional boxer. After his retirement, he continued to give of himself and coached youth. Survived by his three children and a host of family members. Funeral arrangements are pending.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, Mr. Rosengold?
Thank you, Madam President. Rodrigo Pascal, the father of deputy mayor for the environment, Romel Pascal, died of renal failure on January thirtieth, two thousand and eleven. At the age of eighty at Kaiser Hospital in Downey, he was surrounded by Amelia, his wife, for fifty and a half years, and their loving children and grandchildren. Rodrigo was born on May second, nineteen thirty, in Sempolik District of Manila in the Philippines, and attended MAPPA Institute of Technology, graduating with a Bachelor of Science degree in mechanical and electrical engineering. After moving to the United States in the early seventies, Rodrigo worked in various engineering jobs. After moving his family to Downey, California in nineteen seventy-eight, Rodrigo was hired as a stationary engineer by the California Youth Authority at the Fred C. Nell's Youth Correction Facility in Whittier, California. He often shared stories of hope for the young men prematurely incarcerated at the former reform school, and he was affectionately called Rudy by his friends there. Rodrigo juggled day and night while coaching and tutoring his young children. He prized his role as a family car mechanic, specialty cook, laundry specialist, horticulturist, and comedian. Rodrigo loved children, cartoons, singing and cooking. He cherished, nourished, and honored his wife. He was emphatically proud of his four children, four grandchildren, nieces and nephews, and he sprinkled wit, justice, and enchantment at everyone he met. He survived by his wife Amelia, son Raphael, and his wife Martha, daughter Amita, and her husband Sean's, son Romel, daughter and guardian angel Angelita, a brother Alfredo, and his grandchildren Ryan, Alsacia, Evan, and Quinn. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Rosengold, I would like to also adjourn in memory of Mrs. Eloise Byrd, who was ninety-three years old. She was a resident of the Ninth District and lived at Pueblo del Rio Housing Development. She was known as a wonderful neighborhood, neighbor and friend, warm-hearted, kind and loving, with a giving spirit. She attended the Dream Center and Four Square Baptist Church under the leadership of Pastor Matthew Bartlett, where she received special consideration from the ministry from her unwavering, excuse me. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, she passed away on Sunday, January sixteenth, while preparing to attend church. She is survived by her three daughters, niece, two nephews, five grandchildren, nineteen great-grandchildren, thirteen great-great-grand, great-great-grandchildren, and one great-great-great-grandchild. Eloise will be sincerely missed.
That's amazing. So, thank you, everybody, I'm sorry I started coughing, but, well, excuse me. Let's adjourn the meeting, city clerk, call the roll. I choked it up.